Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock sharp, and here in the city of Las Vegas, we do everything on time. And especially when I see so many handsome and beautiful young people here. For those of us who are longer of tooth, while time is more precious, it's not so important that we do everything on time. Okay, so let me get started with what I'm doing. Okay, the March 16th, 2016 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel Two and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note, some customers of CenturyLink or those who have CenturyLink may view this program in high definition on Channel 1002, and some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box, they may view this meeting on digital channel 69.9? Is that right? 69?
Start now.
Okay, and Councilman Coffin just came in. You're about 12 lines too late, but I'm not going to reread it for you. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel Two on the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire and detection sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exit to the back of these chambers, out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace, down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please see one of our marshals or a fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewiston First. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation in public hearing items, we have available a speaker card, which you may complete and submit to our city clerk up here. Cards are available online, the clerk's office, or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, also please come forward and see our city clerk staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by security officers when exiting these chambers. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Reverend Charlotte Faust, Community Spiritual Center, and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Let's just take a breath together. Divine Mind, Great Spirit, Heavenly Father, God of all creation, we come together this morning with one mind, one heart, to do the work of our community. We are of many cultures, national origins, and faith traditions, and with the same focus and intention to live together in harmony and build a thriving, safe, and prosperous community. We give thanks this morning for this opportunity to participate and to serve, and so it is. Amen. Thank you. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will be coming down for the ceremonial portion. Good morning, everybody. Sorry about that. Pardon the lump in my cheek. I, like Councilwoman, have had this wonderful cold, allergies, bronchitis, whatever's going around, and so I have a lump, which is a cough drop. All right, this is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for our first item, I would like to invite a representative of Building and Safety down here, Christine Beckwith, please, to join us up front wherever... There. What are you doing over that side?
It's got to be by the sign, Mayor.
Oh, that's very smart. Chris Knight, also, who is our Director of Building and Safety, also has this cold and didn't want to give it to everybody that's here. So you are more beautiful than he is, so this is good. But anyway, we're not here about them, we're here about, as you know, our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. They build our community to make life better, and I'm proud to announce, and that is why Christine's here, to announce that the Employee of the Month, surprise, is Tasha Ely. Tasha! Ah. We're so proud of you. Wonderful. Okay. Tasha's been with this city for eight years and is the Administrative Secretary for Building and Safety. This magnificent lady is one of our most outgoing and friendly people, look at that smile, who you will find at our Development Services Center, 333 North Rancho, right at 95. She's always flashing her great smile and is ready and willing to take on any task asked. Tasha's trademark is "I got you." She embodies teamwork and is always there to lend a hand or take on a new project to make sure her department and the city are providing top-notch customer service. It's such a pleasure to work with genuine people like Tasha, and she is the excellent example of the caliber of employee that we want to have in our city. She tackles every task with enthusiasm and determination and takes responsibility. She shows the public every day how much we value serving our residents. Tasha, thank you for all that you do to make this city a great place for our residents to live, and I want to present you with this award in gratitude for all that you do and direct you to look at your left...
Here he goes.
...to look at your left, where you will see a street sign with your name on it. And that will be displayed outside of City Hall for the whole month. I want to give you the opportunity to say a few words, but I do have some words from Chris Knight. You better be watching, Chris, to make sure this is right. Tasha, this is an exact quote, "Tasha's a special employee and highly deserving of the recognition. She's hardworking, regularly has done what needs to be done before I," meaning Chris Knight, "asks that it be done. She's helpful to everyone with whom she comes in contact and has never had a bad day." Thank you for recognizing this wonderful employee, Tasha Ely, and those are his words. However, Christine, would you like to add to that? As shy as she is, here you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Knight really wanted to be here, but he's, like Mayor said, she's sick, he's sick, this is going around, so he's sorry he's going to be there. I'm more than happy to talk about how amazing Tasha is. She is just an incredible person, an incredible city employee, and just an all-around amazing woman, who I'm honored and privileged to work alongside every day. She brings out the best in people, she tackles every duty, no matter how mundane, or boring, or tedious, too complicated, is with a smile on her face, more than willing to help, more than willing to jump in, always offering her assistance, and I've worked with amazing city employees in my career here at the city, but Tasha is definitely in the top 10. She is unbelievable, and I could not be happier to be standing up here beside her. Her caliber of person is amazing.
Very good. Now, you're ready. All right, come right here to the podium, you can lean if it makes you feel good. Come on. All right, here's your opportunity. We're so proud of you and so grateful, because you really make our team and our city work. We know that, and it's so very, very important. We congratulate you, we thank you.
Thank you. I'm really nervous, so please bear with me. Not every day you get recognized. I just go to work and do the work that I'm supposed to do, and I'm grateful that people know that I do a good job and I show up every day to do what I'm supposed to do. I'd just like to thank everybody for the nominating and selecting me for this award. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And you already have one from my trips over there, but good luck, Mayor Chip. We have a second one. All right, let's go get a picture.
It would be very bad if we had.
Always bully eye your business. Pick up a lot of room.
I tried to get in the corner.
Any family here? No.
This is the slowest.
Congratulations. This will be up today. Thank drive-by, drive-by, drive-by. We'll take lots of pictures. Thank you. And Chris, get better. Okay. Are you ready? Okay, for our next item, we have wonderful Councilwoman Tarkanian. Do you want a cough drop?
Just in case, yes.
I've got it here, so I'll peel it.
I'll shout. Even though I'm not quite all well yet, I'm here today because this is such a special group. I went out and saw the work they did, and I cannot tell you how much it touched my heart, the feelings that they had for those they were helping. So I'm indeed honored to recognize a group of special young students, soon to be adults, from our Las Vegas community. And these 15 students are members of the Church of the Latter-day Saints Annual Youth Leadership Conference. With the students and their adult mentors, please join me here in the front, so people can see you on TV today and other days of the week. Get that TV time. In the fall of 2015, Brandon Adams, Dillard Orchard, Austin Calpe, Annie Dam, and Destiny... Whoops, Destiny, I have to get your last name here. Vincent and Destiny Vincent came to my office requesting ideas for a service project that they could do, which would have sustaining qualities and better the lives of others. I gave them suggestions, and they went out and they actually looked at the different suggested activities, and after some discussion within the group, they chose to focus on Stella Fleming Senior Center in Ward One that was in need of three new activity rooms: an outdoor facelift to the parking lot, gardens, benches, bridge, and pedestrian railings. So on a chilly Saturday morning, this very well-organized group of volunteers began the makeover of a library, a craft room, a computer room, an exercise room for the seniors. Artist Susan Wynin drew the designs to be painted on the walls of each room. I was really impressed as I went in, not just paint the walls and make them look better, but paint the walls with an expression of what would be occurring by those inside. So Weston Clark and Abby Lordz oversaw the various other levels of work inside as well as outside. They also worked hard to keep everyone motivated and, of course, on task. As part of the project, the students decided to add their handprints as leaves on trees to a wall that lines the street to the entrance to the facility. It also needed to be painted due to the constant graffiti, as you can see from the photos that we have. So they all went out there, they got their gloves, and we added trees, the artist added the trees. The rest of us put the paint on our hands and put the leaves on there. To involve the resident seniors, the young leaders invited them for a pizza lunch and to walk around the complex to see the improvements. They also encouraged the seniors to add their handprints to the trees, which made for a very rewarding and bonding time for all. We had a good time. It is so refreshing to know and to see these young people exhibit such a high level of professional skills, determination, and ability to work with others, young and old. But mainly, what impressed me most was that they didn't just do what they needed to do to get it done. They did what they did, showing love and extra time, extra patience, extra determination, and when you go into those rooms, you feel that love, and when you look at those trees with all the leaves on the wall, you feel that love. And so often today, we just, you know, we tend to be mediocre, just get the job done, but not these youngsters. They did it over and above, they took that extra step to do the best, and they did that because they had love in their hearts. And I really, really was very grateful for that. And I'd like to read the names of the students, as Mac, who is here on my right, comes over here.
So sorry. We had a tushy about there. There's your cough drop.
Thank you. As Mac and the other mentors give them their certificates, which are here by Ms. Councilman Ross. Tanner Barnes, Morgan Montenegro, Dylan Hayton, Emma Gutierrez, Austin Calpe, Julia Jackson, Dylan Orchard, Annie Dam, Brandon Adams, Destiny Vincent, and I just want to tell you, Destiny, that's a beautiful way to spell that name, and Conrad Campbell. I'd also like to recognize the President of the State, Sean Gutierrez, and First Counselor Nick Lordz, who couldn't be here, but our Second Counselor, Dick Jarman, is... Ah, there you are, yes. And I'm going to have you speak, if you would, please, but first, I'd like to say, it's important to recognize that young people of this caliber usually have strong support from family and friends as well, so I would like each adult to raise your hand that's been here and helped this group as I say your name. Matt McKnight, who's over there, Curtis Harris, Richard and Janet Worthing, Brad Hayton, George Ralphs, Greg Garrett, Greg and Celine Bowman, I hope you're raising your hands, Lori Johnson, Alma de la Vega, Gary and Palalina Radmal. And I just want to say again, I emphasize this, we see all this anger in our country now, this lack of warmth and understanding for each other, and to have a group of this age reach over and show that love and that caring and that understanding the way they did was absolutely marvelous. It was one of the finest things that I've seen, and I greatly appreciated it. And now I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. Well, Councilwoman Tarkanian did a very good job of recapping what we did. I won't have to do any of that. I guess all I would like to say is that there are way too many times where projects like this come to pass, and there's plenty of good that's done in the community just like this all the time, but more often than not, it's organized, planned, and executed by adults, and the kids get invited and they come and participate. And that is not the way this project took place, nor any of the projects we try to endeavor to complete. These kids that you see up here met with Councilwoman Tarkanian and the other leaders, with Rob and her assistant, and they decided and came to us as leaders with what they wanted to do. Our job is to make sure it's safe and that it's feasible, and in some cases, affordable. But these kids did everything. They planned it, they did the bill of materials, the acquisitions, the organization of the groups that day for the project, and I could not be more proud of them. I think one of the reasons it's probably worthwhile to recognize them in a setting like this is this is what our community really needs, and we're grateful to be here with the leaders of our community and hopefully inspire other groups. There are 27 LDS stakes in the valley. Each one of those stakes undertakes a youth conference annually. There are well over 100,000 members of the church here in this valley, and so there are groups like this all over. We certainly are not any better or any different than all of them, and there have been projects like this taken under all over the valley. But I'm so impressed with this group of young men and young women, and the fact that they did all of the planning and really deserve the credit, where sometimes the credit's really to the adults and the kids just get to come up and get the FaceTime. That was not the case. And I know they've learned leadership skills, and I'm so proud of each one of them. I know them all individually very well. I also know that their math and English teachers are probably wondering where they are, so they'll probably leave as soon as we're done, but we're grateful to the city for allowing us to help teach these kids service, leadership, and love, and we appreciate all of that. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that we had some special ones here for Mac McKnight, who was there early, and Sean Gutierrez, yeah, early and worked hard, and I'd like to have a picture of all of us. You're a special group. I'm going to keep that picture in my office. So could we get a good picture of everybody together? Let's... Councilman Ross, you put us together.
And I would like to give each one of you a good luck, Mayor Chip. As you're getting older, you're going to need it, I know. We're taking care of you. It's also on the backside, you can call any of the council people, has the phone number and address, but we wish you a healthy, wonderful future. We thank you for all that you're doing for our community, and what I want to do is make sure I've given everybody else a chip. Did you get one?
I did not.
Well, I can't get in line then, sorry. There you go. Here you go. No, 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 I'm out. Mayor Pro Tim, I need two more. Please. Then we can continue on. This will keep the colds away as well. Thank you. Okay, now...
So could we redo that? Could you two littler people come forward? Come? We love you. We filled in the gaps? Okay, okay, all right. Height challenge is wonderful. I'm height challenged in the other direction, so it works. Okay, we got enough, Shane? Thank you all again, we really appreciate. Back to class, do well. Moms and dads, thank you. Okay. Okay, for our next item, Councilman Barlow, you've got something to do here.
Yes, you can just take them both.
You go with it, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I have the honor and the privilege of, honor and privilege of recognizing some very special individuals today who have been working on a program for many years for the city of Las Vegas, whether it be in the city of Las Vegas in their role as employees or just volunteers. And I would like to ask first and foremost that Mr. Tim Hacker, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Maggie Plaster, the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, please come and stand with me if they're here. Thank you all. And also, Dr. Lisa Morris Hibbler, who's unable to be with us today. She's the new Director of the Youth Development and Social Innovation Director for the city of Las Vegas, and so I know she's at home tending to her ill child, so, Lisa, I know you're watching. Thank you all so very much. And also, I would ask that Ms. Nancy Deener, my good friend, Director of Cultural Affairs, please come and join me as well. Please come and stand with me. Let's give Nancy a round of applause as she comes. This year, I have the opportunity of recognizing a number of people who have celebrated and participated in the Black History and Peace Week Committee members, so please turn your attention to the video as I walk through the backdrop of this presentation today. The city of Las Vegas Parks and Recreation Department, Office of Cultural Affairs, and the Department of Youth Development and Social Innovation host a variety of activities and observance of Peace Week and Black History Month. The city of Las Vegas has participated in Peace Week activities in many ways over the years, but the Gospel Showcase, which celebrates the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., has withstood the test of time and has always been a focal point of Peace Week. This is the 37th year the city of Las Vegas has recognized the accomplishments of African-Americans both locally and nationally. The Midday Inspirational Showcase is among the longest-running annual programs that has been supported by the community. This year's activities included a school resource fair, basketball tournament, softball game, fish fry, soul food luncheon, arts display, talent show, essay contest, and a variety of workshops with guest speakers, and the Trailblazers Breakfast, which recognizes local leaders who make a huge impact in the lives of our businesses and residents. And so today, I would like to bring forward the members of the Planning Committee for their efforts and their work in the 2016 Black History Month Committee as we celebrate you here today before the mayor and city council and the city of Las Vegas as a whole. So first, I would like to ask that Cassandra Lewis, please come forward, and as your name is called, please come. Latasha Phillips, Monique Miller, Lakeisha Dickens, Michelle Yares, Cindy Moyes, Lisa Russell, Michelle Brown, Philip Thompson, Phil Thompson, Melissa Fredrickson, Halima Bailey-West, Camille Franklin, Willie Henderson, Dean Matson, Latoya Lomax, Sheena Mitchell, Deidra Thomas, Savanta Manor, Willie Dunn, Joyce Barrow-Henderson, Jordan Moore, Stephanie Laurie, Leilani Vines, and Gerardo Luisvanos. If you all please, let's give them all a round of applause. This is the committee that has assisted, so I just wanted to say thank you so very much for your continued assistance in making sure that the committees in which we host here at the city of Las Vegas, or the programs that we host here throughout the city of Las Vegas, continue to be recognized and so forth, that it could not be possible without each and every one of you. And so being that you're standing the closest to me, Ms. Lewis, I'm going to have you speak on behalf of everyone, our fearless leader. Cassandra Lewis, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Good morning, everyone. Mayors and council members. First of all, I just want to say that I'm grateful and humbled by being part of this committee. They are simply wonderful and awesome. They are simply wonderful and awesome. Everybody played a major part in putting this together. We started off with Dr. King Peace Week and we ended with our Black History events throughout the month. And everybody stepped up. We exceeded and met our roles in the numbers that we wanted to service. I just would like to say, Black History Month is not just for us one month, it's throughout the year. And we take this one month to educate and enlighten and highlight some of the activities and local participants that come and help us celebrate throughout Black History Month. So to all the committee members, I just want to say I'm grateful and thankful for your support, that none of us could have done this without each other, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And Mayor, the mayor has $1,000 chips. Is it $1,000, Mayor? She has $1,000 chips. So make sure that you go play that, where can they play that, Mayor?
In jail.
In jail? Thank you all so very much for your leadership here at the city of Las Vegas. Now, does everyone work for the city? Do we have any volunteers outside the city, Cassandra?
We were able to get volunteers. Trinity Academy of Art was one of them. Help me out, guys. Ingrid Williams, who is now retired, came back and helped. We had the explorers that came out and helped. We also co-partnered this year with the county. So they were part of this year's event, so UNLV. So anybody else? So yeah, we did have some partnerships and thank you, Mayor. I mean... Thank you, Councilman, because the Councilman also came out and supported us, too.
Thank you all so very much. Do we need to get a photo? Let's get a photo. Let's get a photo. Everyone, get in here, squeeze in here. Come on, Mayor. Dean Mattson, where's Dean? Dean? Please. Hold on, we're waiting for Dean. Good deal. Mr. Hacker? Thank you and Ms. Plaster so very much for your support. Thank you so very much. And moving, yes, and moving right along. I would like to ask that Dan Stock, Vice President of Easter Seals, and Brian Patchett, President and CEO of Easter Seals, if you would please come forward. Let's give them a round of applause. Have they come? And if we'll roll the PowerPoint, please. This presentation today, ladies and gentlemen, Easter Seals will host their 8th Annual Easter Walk and Roll Event to benefit Easter Seals Nevada. This is a fun-filled event where friends and families gather to enjoy a half-mile walk, which I'll be participating in because I need all the walking I can get. I need to lose some more pounds. This suit is getting kind of tight, Mayor.
I'm watching you from the back.
Okay, she's walking, she says she watches me from the back. Right, this is a fun-filled event where friends and families gather to enjoy a half-mile walk, live music, Easter egg hunt, bounce houses, a petting zoo, pony rides, and activities for the whole family, all to benefit Nevadans living with disabilities. Please gather your neighbors, colleagues, friends, and family to register as a team and collect pledges to help support those in our community who need a helping hand this Easter. Participants who raise more than $40 will receive an event tee-shirt. Proceeds support Easter Seals Nevada, the proceeds will support Easter Seals Nevada and its mission to help individuals with disabilities to become self-sufficient through direct services, education, and community partnerships. The pre-walk festivities and entertainment, including the event kickoff speeches, begin at 9:00 a.m., followed by the 9:30 walk. All participants will have the opportunity to meet, walk with Easter Seals 2016 and honorary ambassadors, individuals who have directly benefited from the support received through Easter Seals program. Now, at 10:15 a.m., Easter Seals presents Easter, their Easter carnival, featuring an Easter egg hunt, photos with the Easter Bunny, games and activities for the family, food, music, and more. And so for that, I want to thank you all so very much for doing what you do each and every day on behalf of those in our community who are less fortunate and those with disabilities. And so at this time, I would ask that you please share a few more words in regards to your activity and how more individuals in the community, whether it be businesses or residents, will have an opportunity to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wonderful. Well, my name is Brian Patchett. I've had the wonderful privilege of being the CEO of Easter Seals Nevada now for over 12 years. I'm also a person with a disability, and so this is very personal for me as we help people. Last year, we helped almost 8,500 Nevadans with disabilities across the state of Nevada. The vast majority of those folks were people right here in our wonderful county, here in Clark County, and of course, in the city of Las Vegas. This event is wonderful because we bring together people with disabilities, people from the community, and we have a chance to celebrate our springtime, celebrate our time together. And of course, our name's Easter Seals, so Easter is a great time for us. We will have great games, great, we're even going to have a petting zoo and stuff. But all the money that is raised for Easter Seals at this event stays in Nevada, goes directly to the people we serve. Roughly 90 cents of every dollar we raise goes directly to people with disabilities. And that is a commitment that I made a long time ago. Having grown up with a disability, my commitment is to see more people every single year become more independent and become a greater part of our community. So thank you very much, Councilman Barlow. I appreciate your support in this and the support of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And the mayor and Las Vegas City Council would like to present you with this certificate, which states the mayor members of the Las Vegas City Council recognizes you as you host the Easter Rock, Walk and Roll, Rock and Roll, Walk and Roll, to benefit Easter Seals on Saturday, March 26, 2016, at Lorenzi Park. We send our absolute best wishes for a successful event as you continue to serve the residents and families in our great community. So on behalf of the mayor and city council, we would like to congratulate you and wish you the best of luck. Thank you, sir. Would you like to share a few words? You good? All right, let's get a photo. Mayor?
Okay, we're going to have photo.
I'm the tall guy.
Is everybody okay?
Thanks. Thanks so much for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. I know we have some more, so Councilman Barlow, thank you. And to be perfectly honest, I do have your back all the time.
I know you do.
Right?
Yes, you do.
For your clothing only. No, I'm kidding. Okay, so Councilman Barlow, our next item, Councilman Coffin is going to recognize some wonderful young people here. I think.
Well, well done. There you go. Thank you, ma'am. I'm not quite ready. I'm like Councilwoman Tarkanian, there's all this cold going on and mine's somewhere between my neck and my chest. I can't tell what's there. Well, thank you very much, Mayor. And really, today is mid-month of a fabulous month for another reason, and of course, that is that we always celebrate in March, the anniversary of Cesar Chavez and his march, 300-mile march, a pilgrimage, if you will, from Delano to Sacramento in California to protest the treatment of farm workers. This was now 50 years ago, can you imagine? We have always had in our minds the boycott of grapes or the boycott of various vegetable products grown in the Central Valley by people who were not very well-paid and they were not organized. And really, it wasn't the malevolence of the growers so much as it was the neglect, benign neglect of the citizens of California that allowed the people to work for starvation wages in basically concentration camp conditions. And it was Cesar Chavez and his allies who really organized people, who had, and by the way, Cesar Chavez, born in Yuma, Arizona, really recognized that this is a thing not just for immigrants, but for native-born United States citizens. And so each year, we have a little art contest in the schools. We have 13 elementary schools in Ward III. Most of them are Latino majority, I would say 60% to 80% population. And yet, they match in scores very well with everybody else in this community, considering that many of the students have English as a second language. They're bright and shiny and they learn the English quick. And of course, they're teaching their parents, too. It's always hard for the first generation, but the second and third generations are sharp. I want to introduce now our winners. First of all, Luigi Lares, come on up. His parents and the Robert Lunt Elementary School staff, come on up here at the podium. And also, Jeanette Contreras and her parents and the Sunrise Acres staff for their wonderful work. These two bright young people created some very nice posters, art posters that we will be using in the celebration this year. And also, in the audience is our good friend, Mimi Quintero. Mimi is Cesar's niece. We can't let anything go by without recognizing Mimi Quintero, who is extremely active in our community. Shows up at everything. And she's active politically, but not in a particularly partisan way. She'll support anybody who will support us. And I think that's the key thing, the community appreciates. We also have in the audience with us today Kevin Childs, a school trustee who gives an enormous amount of time to the students in Ward III and everywhere his district represents, which is actually larger than Ward III. So Kevin, welcome, and you could join us if you like, you know? Okay. Cesar Chavez spent a lifetime of social justice with the motto, "Si se puede." Yes, we can. You've all heard it, and now you know what it means. Si se puede. Yes, we can. It's a little bit to our community like the slogan of the shoe company Nike. Just do it. Don't mess around, just do it. Well, Cesar deserves this honor every year, and we give it to him, but he did it for young people and for their parents. And so I'm welcoming these two young winners of our arts contest, and we have something to present for you, something very individualistic, which was designed by our staff, Kristi, and our staff in the Ward III office, for artists, for people with talent. You are being given this, Luigi, and you can show that off to everyone. That's an artist palette individually created for each person with the brush. So there you go. And Jeanette, we're pleased to give this to you, too. Let the cameraman see that and take a good picture of it for you so we can put it on the internet and we'll have it there for all your friends. Everybody here is so proud of you, principals and parents, truly, I visit every September and we always, the Ward III office, through you and the taxpayers, provide extra supplies that the school district cannot afford. So we are there every September, and so it's nice to be able to visit more than once with some of the students. Thank you, Luigi. Did you want to say something, Luigi? You do? Good.
Of course, basically, my, like, the reason why I did this was, I've been in a lot of projects, I've been in a lot of after-school. And just a couple of months ago, I was promoted to be in After-School All-Stars, which is like an after-school company that basically does the same thing as what Cesar Chavez did, helping the community, helping everyone, changing things. And that's what I made in being able to get this.
Good for you, Luigi. Thank you. Jeanette, do you feel like saying a few words today? Okay, you just can't wait to get back to school, I think that's the problem. All righty, thank you for being here. Thank you for honoring us with your presence. Would anybody else like to say a word or two? Anybody feel inspired to seize the microphone? Well, thank you. Yes, Mimi? Okay.
Good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to me to be here this morning. I want to say thank you to everybody, but especially to Councilman Bob Coffin. He always supports Cesar Chavez Day and of course, everybody here. Thank you. And to these wonderful kids, thank you. Impressed me. And I'm happy. Thank you, everybody.
More than words, actions. Again, thank you very much, everybody, for being here. We, maybe we have failed to recognize somebody out there in the audience. I want to make sure that, come forward, yes, we have more people. Okay, come on up.
I'm sorry. Hello, my name is Gabriela Torres. I'm the Chairwoman of Cesar Chavez de Las Vegas. My sister actually is the person who founded the event. And the reason why she started this event was because she noticed that we didn't really teach anything in the curriculum about Hispanic people and how Hispanic people have made positive impacts to America as well. And so she started this festival to educate the youth on how Cesar Chavez was somebody who did something amazing that no one else had ever done before. So having these kids know who he is, do our art, which is beautiful art, if you look at our flyer, it's absolutely gorgeous. And having them know who he is is just continuing the life and legacy and having Councilman Bob Coffin helping us with it, just is everything in the world, not just to me, not just to my sister, and not just to my mom, but to the community. And I want to thank you guys for that.
Thank you. So kind of you to say that. Kevin, would you like to step up and say a couple of words on behalf of the school district? Okay, Kevin, you'd be in the picture then. Okay, good. Don't forget, everybody, March 26 is the big party, free, at Freedom Park, Gary Rees Park, 10:00 in the morning. Come on down, it's a lot of fun. So that's just 10 days away. Okay, let's get together for a picture.
Thank you. I mean, this is just so wonderful. But you know, the lesson that's really here, we're an enormously diverse community. And whether you come from Japan or Korea or Malaysia, or you come from India, Pakistan, South America, wherever you come from in this world, it's very important that as we become adults and have families, that we as parents take responsibility for sharing the beautiful culture and history and artistic parts of our own background and our culture. And for us, as a city here in Las Vegas, the Las Vegas, it's wonderful that you come forward. And I appeal to everybody, whether, whatever your background is, whether you're from Yugoslavia, and no matter where you're from, this is the pride of Las Vegas, is to be this diverse community, each of us holding on to the pride of our backgrounds, our parents, our grandparents, our relatives, and honoring them, but doing so by making our community strong and united as one. So we thank you. This is a great celebration. And I think of your family, my goodness. And I, you know, I think each of us strives always to make sure, even if our families aren't with us anymore, that they know we're trying to carry on for them. That's our job, is to carry on those great... That's our job, is to carry on those great words, concepts, efforts of those who've lived before us. So you're doing it, and congratulations to you all, and we thank you, we're very, very proud. Thank you. Thank you, Count. Last but not least, the second tallest member of our Councilman Pro Tem, Steve Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Luigi, would you like to be a city councilman one day? Maybe the mayor? I think you've got it in you. Watch your back, Luigi's hunting you down there, Councilman. Thank you all very much for being here, that was wonderful. On a more serious note, I'd like to bring Stacy Ridenhour down, a local mother who has put her heart and soul into preventing suicide in our community. Come on down, Stacy. We did this last year too, but we're going to do this every year if we can. Who's with you, Stacy? Ashley, how are you? Good to see you. Thanks for being here. From the devastating personal loss of her own daughter, Brittany Helton, from suicide, Stacy has reached forward to provide a lifeline for other families suffering the devastation of her own family experience. Locally, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention trains field advocates to work with public officials toward the ambitious goal of reducing suicide by 20 percent by the year 2025. Having Stacy here, I hope that we are spreading the word to every elected official in our community that suicide has claimed too many in our valley. The 2015 Out of the Darkness Walk at Centennial Hills Park, and I think we've got some pictures in the back, had 1,100 participants and raised over $67,000 in donations. This Saturday at Centennial Hills Park, they plan to do it all over again. Our community must have more discussions about suicide and about everything we can do as elected officials to help those in need. On a side note, my wife was actually a suicide prevention specialist years ago, and worked, yes, yes, she was up long hours in the night on the phone. Great, here we go. Sorry, Kelly. 100 people die a day in our country from suicide. Imagine the outrage if this was something else. Now is the time to address this mental health crisis in our community. If you're watching this and you need help, it's easy to get. So Stacy, you're going to talk about that, but you can certainly contact the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline at 1-800-273-TALK. And Stacy, I want you to, both of you fill us in on what else we can do to prevent this in our community.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ross, I appreciate it. And Madam Mayor and all of the other representatives, thank you so much. I became involved with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention shortly after my daughter passed away in 2010. So it was, it was a devastating experience. So it was something that I felt that I needed to get involved with. However, we have been making strides in Nevada since then. Right now, Nevada is ranked number seven in the nation for deaths by suicide. We lose someone in Nevada every 16 hours to suicide. So, put that number in your head for a minute. We are losing 23 veterans and active-duty military members every day to suicide. So with, and you know, you have quite a few military members in your ward, so it's, it's a devastating number. On August 27th, after five years of hard work by a dedicated group of people that I am so very fortunate to get to work with, Nevada officially became the 78th chapter of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. So we're very proud of that. AFSP is three years ahead of schedule for having representation in all 50 states in the United States, so that's amazing. AFSP's mission is to save lives and bring hope to those affected by suicide. And our goal, like Mayor Pro Tem Ross said, is to reduce the rate of suicide by 20 percent by the year 2025. This Saturday at Centennial Hills Park, the Nevada chapter is hosting our sixth annual Out of the Darkness Community Walk. Each year, the walk brings together supporters from all walks of life to remember their loved ones and to bring hope to those who are looking for it. So Be the Voice, come out and join us on Saturday at Centennial Hills Park. Registration starts at 9 o'clock. The walk starts at 10. We're hoping to raise lots of money, and I know that Councilman Barlow needed to do a walk, so he said that he's going to head out there, I think. So thank you very much for this opportunity. I brought you a little gift, if you don't mind. This is our new tagline, Be the Voice, Stop Suicide. And I also brought you an Out of the Darkness Community Walk shirt, so you can wear those proudly. And that, we brought those because you're such a great voice for us, and you do everything for us and for the community. So thank you. Thank you for everything.
Stacy, you're the one, you and Ashley, you're the ones that are making a difference in this community.
Michelle is also on our, Chief Freeman's also.
Thanks, Chief, for doing that. Well, we've got to do more in this community. That's, that's just an unacceptable number to all of us. So, you know, we know about it, we'll do our part, you continue to do your part, and you just let us know what we need to do to help and get that message out there. Okay, we need money. We need money, lady money. Go to the walks at Centennial Hills Park this Saturday. What time? What time?
9:00 AM.
9 o'clock? Registration? Okay, and that's for you too, for recognition, a little recognition for all that you guys do for us and the community. Thank you very much. You guys are wonderful, and I'll wear these proudly.
Please do.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Photos?
Yep.
I'm going to do a photo with everybody. I'm 16, Mayor, so.
You know, the state has really gotten involved in this effort too. We lost another young person, Haley Lambert, a few years back. And so now, there's a bullying contact at every school, and to make sure that we do everything we can, not only here in Southern Nevada, but across our state. And Jason Lambert Haley's father really was pounding the ground to make sure that something was done that was of great significance. And so Governor Sandoval put this in place. So we are making inroads, and we'll continue to do so. Great, thank you. Great, great, great.
One more thing. One more thing, yes. Okay. This month happens to be, and where's Councilwoman go? She's in the back. Where's our city manager? It happens to be Women's History Month. So I want to recognize some of the significant women in my life, and Kristi, I'm glad you stuck around for this so you could see, see this. Mayor Goodman, on behalf of Women's History Month, that is for you. And our own city manager, Betsy Fretwell, that's for you, Betsy. And this one is for our wonderful city councilwoman, Lois Tarkanian. She's watching in the back, so look. Councilwoman, oh, here she comes, wonderful. She's coming for a rose. Yes, you have to be here for Women's History Month, Councilwoman. It's not going to be the same without you, you know that. Take your time. So Councilwoman, and Mayor Goodman, and Ms. Fretwell, thank you for your contributions to this city, to this community, your neighborhoods, your families, and what it means to be a woman in the city of Las Vegas. Come on over here, Councilwoman. Oh, we got to take a photo.
What a nice thing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
All the thorns on the outside of the roses.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies, thank you. That is such a nice thing. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you, here are your shirts. And because of that, us ladies, we are going to take a 10-minute recess so we can regroup. But for every man in the world, we still love you. It's wonderful to be a woman. So you guys that are my partners here up there, all of you, all of you men everywhere, we do love you, so, but thanks for this, this is wonderful.
Okay, there are two of us up here, but I did give them an extra minute and a half, so. But anyway, all right, so, are we on Agenda Item 11?
Yes, you are.
Wonderful.
We have one card.
And we have one card. Thank you very much. Is Councilman Beers walking around? Golfing we go. Okay, Agenda Item 11. Public comment during this portion of the Agenda must be limited to matters on the Agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the Agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. We'll set the time, since you will have other opportunities at one minute. And I have a card from Michael Bisson, or Bison. Is that?
Bisson?
Bisson. Okay, thank you very much. And if you take off your hat for me, please.
Got it.
And then also repeat your name for our clerk.
Yes, for record, first name is Michael, last name is Bissens, spelled B-I-S-S-O-N.
Thank you.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
I've come here today as a gentleman who works for a young tech startup company. I recently, my team relocated here to Las Vegas, Nevada. And I have to be honest with you, this is my first city council meeting here in the city of Las Vegas, and I absolutely love, this just puts more emphasis on me as far as we made the right choice. We actually work for a company called the Pro Gaming League.
Pro Gaming?
And we're involved with, yes, Pro Gaming League, and we're involved with major video game tournaments. And I'm not talking about like, video poker, or those machines that I've grown so accustomed to see in gas stations and grocery stores, but actual video game tournaments. The company was originally founded in 2013 in Canada, and when they acquired our team, they actually gave us three options. We could move to Los Angeles, Chicago, or join them in Canada. When they came with those options, we opted that we moved to Las Vegas, as it is the entertainment capital of the world, and we wanted to bring our services to this great city. So my reason for coming here today is to first and foremost introduce myself to the council, but also ask for any kind of assistance. I'm doing research on grants, as far as the downtown project and buildings located within the Fremont East section to move our offices to, so I was looking for any kind of assistance or any point and direction of who we could talk to.
Okay, thank you very much for coming forward. I'm going to ask Mr. Regelman to give you, or Jace, because I was waiting for Bill Arndt. Oh, I'm looking low down. Here's Bill Arndt, Director of our Economic and Urban Development. If you will meet with him right there with, yes, and please. Would we what?
Would you indulge him?
I will indulge you.
One moment.
Yes, please.
So, you're going to be bringing players to Las Vegas for live tournaments?
Yes, we have a multitude of different activations that we're planning at this time. We've actually worked, we've spoken to a couple of the different casinos downtown. I think maybe to help bring a little more understanding, I can give you my personal experience. From 2005 to 2008, after I graduated high school, I foregoed going to college immediately to pursue my passion of competing on the professional circuit for video games, of which I actually made enough earnings, I paid my way through college to earn a, I have an associate's degree in criminal justice. Hundred percent paid for, I have no student loans, I was able to make enough money to put myself through college, and with that being said, the industry-
Could I introduce you to Bernie Sanders, please?
Yeah. With that being said, I actually, the industry is booming. We're quickly, as far as entertainment, we're heads and shoulders above other spectacle events. There's a company that we work directly with called twitch.tv. They were acquired by Amazon in 2014 for 200, or $970 million, nearly a billion dollars, almost hit that mark. And we work directly with them to help hold events all throughout the country. And that is the main purpose that we moved here to Las Vegas, is that we want to make Las Vegas a hub for these tournaments, and bring the community more into the lifestyle and nightlife that is, that Vegas has to offer.
Very exciting.
How many competitors in your largest tournament so far, largest live event so far?
Largest live event? Well, specifically, you have, just for information here, within Las Vegas, you have the Evolution Fighting Game Championships, which is for fighting games that host international players from all around the world. That's roughly 20,000 players. We're working with another local organization, Level Up Expo, that's holding an event here in May at the Gashman Center, and we're approximately, we're estimating 10,000 players to come out for that. There's also the North American League of Legends Championships is going to be held here at MGM Grand for the first time ever, and that's approximately 40,000 people that will be attending that event.
I am going to take the prerogative of the chair. This is public comment, you are allowed one minute, and we aren't supposed to be commenting here, but with the permission of our legal staff, may I take the prerogative of the chair and allow this to happen?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Are you split down there in your decision? I got a yay. Are you going to say, no, I'm not listening?
Just within your discretion.
Okay, within my discretion, but I'm going to adopt you, is one of the things. Councilman Beers, are you anything?
My only last question was not really terribly pertinent for public purposes, but it was, what was your personal most successful game when you were a player?
I actually, I competed in three different titles. I competed in a title called Quake 4 on the PC. I also competed in Counter-Strike, which was a five-man team event, and I also played in Team Fortress 2, where I both, I switched from being a professional player to being a coach and a team owner, but then also, within that year, transitioned to actual content development. So, just, yeah, the basic way to put it is that the way my dad describes to his friends what I do is that I'm the John Madden of video games, because I go and do commentary and host these events and put on these events and things like that, and share my knowledge to the people viewing at home so they get a better understanding of it.
You've sold us up here, it sounds like. I'm going to move this on, but Mayor Protam wanted to say something, too.
Thank you, Mayor, for indulging me as well. Mr. Bisson, one thing we're going to help you with, number one, welcome to Las Vegas, we're glad you came here.
Thank you very much.
And we say Nevada.
Nevada?
Nevada.
Nevada, okay.
And my assistant Christine there is going to get your attention here in a minute to help.
No, 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 she is going to block you from leaving the podium, because if you talk about somebody into technology, that is this lady. But you are going to talk with her after you speak to the gentleman. If you could put your hand up, both of you, thank you. If you'll go and speak with Bill Arndt, our Director of Economic and Urban Development, and we do welcome you, we're delighted you're in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, I greatly appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, anyone else wishing to comment at this time? Hearing seen, nobody, we'll move on to Item Number 12. For possible action, any items the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, held in abeyance to a future, meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Coffin has requested that Agenda Item 59 be obeyed to the April 6, 2016 meeting. It is for possible action. The Audit Oversight Committee, Greg Rosavir, term expiration 9/5/2006, has resigned, and for another appointment. So I'm just kidding, we're going to give him some time to find another appointment. That's my motion, Mayor.
Thank you, there's a motion. Please vote and please post. That motion passes. Agenda Item 13, for possible action to prove the final minutes by reference of the February 17, 2016, regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to prove those minutes?
A motion to prove those minutes, Mayor.
There's a motion, please vote. And please post. And that motion carries. Items, we're on to Agenda Item 14 through 53. Items 14 through 53 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, are recommended for approval by the departments. They may be enacted in one motion. We have two ward corrections to read for the record. Agenda Item Number 27 should read Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow, and Agenda Item 30 should read as Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Are there any items that council would like brought forward? Please let us know.
Seeing none, Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda with the corrections I read. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. We're going to go on to Agenda Item 55 first, and that is, discussion for possible action regarding a petition filed by Lyft Inc. pursuant to NRS 237.100, objecting to Bill Number 2015-95, Ordinance 6494, adopted by the City Council on January 20, 2016, pertaining to transportation network companies. Mr. Perrigo is addressing us, or, on this?
Mr. Curtis.
Mr. Curtis, please, please go ahead.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
As the council knows, this Item 55 concerns a business impact statement and the discussion regarding, pertaining to transportation network companies on this petition filed by Lyft Inc. pursuant to NRS 237.100. I think the council, and Your Honor, is aware that Lyft has now filed a lawsuit against us, which is currently being in Department 9 of the Clark County District Court. That case has been joined by Uber. They, last week, they filed another action against us, along the same lines, with almost identical issues, with identical issues, basically. And both cases have been consolidated, and the motion for preliminary injunction filed by Lyft, to which Uber has joined, will be heard by Judge Togliotti on the 28th day of March of this month. We filed our opposition to that motion yesterday, after successfully turning back a motion for temporary restraining order a couple of weeks ago. So, at this point, we invite Lyft and its representatives to come forward and make any statement they wish with regard to Item 55, and, but I wanted just to praise the council that we do have two lawsuits against us on this thing, and at this point, we're open for comments and, from Lyft, the petitioner, and we'll take them as they come. Thank you.
And if I might ask you, Mr. Curtis, I was not at that meeting, I was in Washington, DC, therefore did not participate in any of the discussion. May I continue to conduct this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone wishing to come forward and make some comments, as suggested by Mr. Curtis? So, at this point, with no one coming forward, there is no motion for anything, is there?
There's no motion, just a petition discussion for possible action regarding their petition. Perhaps their council has decided to fight this battle in court, rather than before the city council.
So, what do you want us to do? There's no motion for anything?
So, Your Honor-
Excuse me, I can't see you.
I'm Your Honor, Attorney. Assistant City Attorney Terry Potichello. The petition that's before you has a procedure, as for the city to consider that, city council to consider that petition. And we were expecting the petitioner Lyft to be here to make a statement before you about the impact on their business impact statement. Seeing that there is no petitioner here to make a statement, it now turns on to the city council to determine whether or not their petition has any merit, or it is meritless. So, be that as it may, that is, that is what is being asked of the city council at this time.
That's why she's the procedural expert, and I am not. Okay. So apparently the-
So who is of a legal mind on this council that can advise us?
Your Honor, Mayor Goodman, council members, I'm here on behalf of Lyft, we're monitoring the event. We were not in-
Your name, please, sir.
My name is Max Couvillier, C-O-U-V-I-L-L-I-E-R. And we believe that our position is stated in our petition, as we have stated. We did not receive any other additional notice that we were otherwise required to be here and present either additional evidence or engage in some sort of administrative proceeding. But our position is stated as admitted, and we have nothing else to add.
What I would like to then recommend is that we, I would move that we let the process continue. Is that a legitimate motion?
You can, you can go ahead, and council for Lyft has said that they don't have any, the petition speaks for itself.
So just let the process continue for the city.
So go ahead and go forward, and you can make a-
Yes.
-decision as to what you want to do with the petition.
Your Honor?
Yes, please, Councilman Coffin.
Your Honor, it seems to me that in light of the fact that there has been no protest, that the council should determine that the petition has no merit. And I so move.
Okay, then that is the motion, and that's acceptable? Thank you.
That's appropriate.
Yes, that will be the motion. So all in favor? Please vote.
It's okay to do this.
Yes, and please post. According to council, yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Councilman Coffin. Okay, now, we will move on to Agenda Item 54. Abeyance item, report by Brian McAnallyn, Government Affairs Manager, and discussion for possible action on the city of Las Vegas' current priorities. This is in reference to all wards, and then, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Brian McAnallyn, Government Affairs with the city of Las Vegas, and I have with me today Kelly Martinez, also in Government Affairs at the city, and Bob Ostrowski in the audience, who is our contract lobbyist at the state legislature. We wanted to give you a quick update and outline our strategy for determining our direction looking forward to the 2017 session. As you're aware, a year from now, we will be at least six or seven weeks into the session, so, while 2017 seems like it's far away, it's actually right in front of us in our time to prepare for that, that is now. Just quickly, since our last time before you, we have had some activity at the federal level, which I think is of note and something you should hear. Regarding the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the mayor met with Secretary Jay Johnson during the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and we, as our usual case, have advocated pretty strongly for our region to receive urban area security initiative funding. And last cycle, we received $3 million. This year, we're looking at 2.96, with, so just a slight adjustment downward due to some budgetary issues in Washington, DC. So we've been successful in receiving the allocation that our region should get. We have argued that we should receive more dollars, given our unique security initiative, or security circumstances in our community, and will continue to do so this year and ongoing. I'd like to recognize our congressional delegation for their help in this. Senator Reed has really led an effort, along with Congresswoman Titus, Senator Heller, Congressman Heck, Congressman Hardy, and Congressman Amadee, to secure the funds for our state. And we'll continue to look to our partnership with the delegation to do that going forward. But I would be remiss if we did not recognize the efforts and strong engagement on Senator Reed and Congresswoman Titus's part, and we thank them for that. The mayor did a tremendous job pushing Secretary Johnson in making our case, and I think he heard pretty clearly our concerns, and was a strong advocate for us. We also would like to thank Carolyn Levering for her strong support in gathering the information we need, and our partnership with Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department in helping to partner with us in this effort. With the U.S. Department of Transportation, we've recently received a positive response and an adoption of a FAST Act, which is fixing America's surface transportation. Normally, this is a long-term process. The last few years, it's been one-year continuation. Luckily, we've received a five-year bill from Congress and some significant dollar investment in transportation. It's a continuation of MAP 20- It's a continuation of MAP 21, which was the reauthorization of I-11, so the interstate from Las Vegas to Phoenix and Phoenix to Las Vegas. This new bill also designated I-11 as a corridor for Las Vegas to Reno and beyond. So that was pretty significant in this bill as well. There's a reauthorization of Tiger Grants, which is the transportation investment generating economic recovery, and RTC has been a recipient of that as well. There's now a focus on freight, and we're beginning to try to plan for those dollars and to impact our region. And then with the Department of Interior, we continue to work with BLM.
If I could, Mr. McAnallyn, I just... I want to thank you really, and Kelly, for the support you gave when we were back in Washington. But in reference to this Department of Transportation, the I-11, you know, it's the adjoining states that really have to come to the table on this. But the most significant piece, and we did meet with Secretary Fox here about how important it is, and I did meet with Mayor Garcetti of Los Angeles to talk about Caltrans working with Endot to try and get an impetus to widen Barstow to Las Vegas, not only for the freight and produce and the backlog that's in the harbors off of San Diego and Los Angeles, but on the good side for us, of course, for tourism, which is our biggest home from tourists is Southern California. But Rudy Monferron of Endot, the head of Endot, was really, really helpful and continues to carry that ball for an immediate look because I-11 weighs out there, and we need something right now to be moving that freight in addition off the railroad tracks that's going on in trucks and widen that because the backlog just slows everything down. So I wanted to thank both of you for your support in getting me into the right people back there to talk about things that can be affected now, not 20 years down the road. So I do want to thank you, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I think it's very important that council knows it's a huge push to widen, and there's plenty of room on the interior of the I-15 from Barstow to Las Vegas. So thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I believe that the federal government will dedicate $1 billion by 2020 to freight, and we do have a great opportunity to continue working with Endot and Caltrans to maximize those dollars for us. I know those conversations are going on, and it'll probably be a long-term effort to secure those. With the Department of Interior, we're working pretty closely with the National Park Service, Superintendent Burpee with Tulie Springs, and BLM to try to resolve some flood issues out there, as well as some parcel challenges with the Sheep Mountain Park realignment. And we've been engaging with our congressional office to secure support there as well, and we thank our partners in that effort to address those issues. Looking forward to 2017, it's now time for us to begin that process, delving into the issues that will impact our city and determine what our agenda will be. We have three BDRs, as we always receive, and the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities will have five BDRs. What the league has chosen to do this year is to allocate those out to different entities. So one bill BDR will be allocated to large cities. A second bill will be allocated to smaller cities, and a third going to towns and government improvement districts. The two remaining BDRs will be, I think, for general issues impacting all cities. And of course, the Board of Directors for the Nevada League will determine what those BDRs are, but we'll be engaging in that process going forward. And they're now beginning to do the determination of some of those top priorities. In gathering the information, we have set up meetings with each one of you over the next month or so to begin to determine what your priorities are and what your concerns are looking forward to the 2017 session, so we can kind of synthesize those. We're also meeting with each of the departments to gather their concerns and top priorities. And then we'll try to draw some focus over the summer with that list and come back to you in August for a council determination of what our three BDRs will be. That is due to Legislative Council September 1st, and that'll give us a little window there as well. And of course, we'll be working with our city attorney's office to draft those bills and make sure they're in proper order for the legislature. We'll be back to you at the end of the year, in December, with an adoption or request for adoption of our legislative platform, which we brought to you right before the last legislative session. So we're going to try to get in front of that a little bit more this year. And of course, it'll be after the November elections. We'll hopefully be able to strategize on what the committees will look like and the issues that we might be dealing with more directly. Of course, this slide is not inclusive of all of the issues that are a priority for the city, but certainly some of them. As we've heard in our last presentation to council, the community survey talked about education being a key to economic development. So those two issues will be a priority. Of course, property taxes, as you've heard about, is a number-one priority for us at this city and all of the government entities that rely on property taxes. So I know that that will be a coordinated effort to address that issue. Not sure what BDR that will be in at this point in time, but of course, it'll be a collective effort to resolve that issue. I would suggest that I think we have some great opportunities in front of us looking at 2017, and strong relationships, not only from staff to legislators and key staff in the legislative process, but also the relationships that you all have. So we'll call on those as we address these issues next session. I'd like to point out that there's a lot of other entities working on their bills right now as well. We have the Legislative Interim Committee process and a group that we've been working pretty closely with, the Southern Nevada Forum. I staff the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee for that entity, and Kelly staffs the K-12 Committee as well. We are looking at a May 5 date that is not our date, but is collectively the Southern Nevada Forum date, to try to determine what the priorities will be for the Southern Nevada Forum so that they can move those into BDRs as well. You're probably aware that there are six committees of the Southern Nevada Forum that meet regularly. I mentioned, too, that Kelly and I work on K-12, education, higher education, transportation and infrastructure, economic development, healthcare, and good governance. Good governance now is broken down into four different subcommittees. One dealing with ethics, open meeting law, and ballot initiatives, which is meeting this afternoon. Property tax, which has been meeting as well and will meet next week. One on C-MAR, which I'm not sure has actually met yet, and one on cross-jurisdictional services, home rule, federal grants, et cetera. I don't believe that the last two subcommittees have met, but they are going to determine their list of priorities, and we'll bring that to the May 5 meeting. Many of you have participated in this type of meeting in the past at UNLV, where we all get together in the big room and then vote on these top priorities, that the forum will then turn into BDRs and go forward. That is what we will do on May 5. We'll make sure that that's on your calendar, and those of you who want to participate will be there, of course, will be there, and helping our committees present on their issues as well. I know some of these subcommittees over the next six weeks will be determining what their topics are, and they kind of meet on a different schedule. If any of you would like to engage in that as we kind of close out looking at May 5, please let us know, and we'll get you the information that you need. With that, I'd like to ask Kelly to present the next two slides, and then I'll wrap up.
Okay, we'll do that because we do have some questions. Please, thank you.
So the interim committees have begun meeting. Most of them started this year in January. The first seven are standing committees and basically have consisted of agency reports and follow-up to bills that were passed in 2015 and their implementation. The bottom committee, the Spending and Government Efficiency, or the Sage Committee, was created this past legislative session by AB 241, and it consists of a number of members appointed by the governor and chaired by Dale Eriagwa. They're tasked with making recommendations to the governor to identify areas in which efficiencies can be made to improve public education. A lot of those committee members are members from the business community and education entities. The Sage Committee has met twice and has heard reports on school construction, classroom technologies, and individual district reports. And then, I'm sure you're all familiar with the Advisory Committee to Develop a Plan to Reorganize CCSD. This interim committee, their study committee, is made up of... So the Advisory Committee is made up of legislators. They've met four times. The TAC Committee, which the mayor sits on, is made up of community leaders and has met about five times. Both committees have heard presentations from state agencies and groups from across the country that have had subject matter expertise in this type of reorganization. As you'll recall, on January 14, the City of Las Vegas held a town hall meeting, and we reported information back to the Technical Advisory Committee on the 27th of that month. We've been asked again to gather some additional information and present later this month. We're working with Dr. Morris Hibler on collecting some data and getting ready for that presentation.
And finally, an update on the Legislative Commission. On February 19, the City of Las Vegas was asked to appear before the Legislative Commission to discuss the licensing of TNCs, or transportation network companies. And after a threat of litigation, we declined to testify, and city staff was subpoenaed to appear and provide testimony, and we complied with that. And of course, Councilmember Beers and Councilmember Coffin were with us for that testimony, and we appreciate your engagement on that issue and help in conveying our message to the legislature. Since February 19, of course, as was mentioned, we've been sued by Uber and Lyft, and, you know, the courts will decide the outcome of those issues. But at that meeting, the Legislative Commission asked us to come back. They were going to meet on February 11, and that meeting has been postponed... I'm sorry, March 11. And that meeting has been postponed to April 4. It's not clear yet whether we'll be on the agenda to present what they asked us to, which was our overall broad process for business licensing. But if we... And we're monitoring the agendas and waiting to see what will happen. But of course, if we're agendized for that, we'll work with legal counsel and take their direction on what is appropriate for us to present at that time. With that, that concludes our presentation. Be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. I know we have some. Thank you both very much for all that you're doing. You really are a wonderful, supportive group and very helpful to us, very thorough. Can you go back three slides with the list? I was just wondering, one more. Yep. Where does water fit in?
Good question. It's not on the list, but of course, that is one of the issues that is a priority. I know our Southern Nevada Forum Transportation Infrastructure Committee heard presentations from SNWA and the Las Vegas Valley Water District, and there are some proposals that they're recommending that that committee is discussing. So I know that there will be water issues and water discussions. I was just kind of running out of space on this particular slide, but it is, of course, an issue we're watching. I failed to mention when this slide was up earlier, I know some of you have some extreme concerns about Medicaid and physician reimbursement. You'll see that listed here as well. That is another one of those issues that collaboratively we're reaching out to other entities and trying to build some consensus on how we'll address that next session.
And of course, solar energy and all sustainability will fall under the energy category. So thank you very much. I know, Councilman Barlow, you had questions. I'm sure everybody else does, too. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, the two questions that I have is, one is related to home rule and the other is RDA. Are we not looking at any of those items this legislative session? I know that they were a part of our conversations last year. So is there anything additional that we need to be looking at in relation to things that we possibly didn't get completely from those two?
Mayor, council member, we, of course, last session had some tweaks or adjustments to RDA, which we think have addressed some concerns for our regional development authority here, redevelopment authority here. We will be sitting down with those departments, or our departments in economic and urban development, discussing with them whether or not they see some tweaks or changes that we need to go forward with this next session. I'm not aware of any specific ones right now. We know that that will be a topic that has opened up from a variety of entities. There were several RDA bills last session. So of course, the issue will be raised from a variety of entities and legislators. On home rule, we also, as you're aware, had AB 493, which granted us some functional home rule, a Dillon's Rule modification, which allows us to operate in a space that has not been determined by either statutory direction or where we have been clearly preempted, and actions taken by council in that space that isn't occupied by the state or directed by the state. If we're ever brought into question on that, the ruling would have to defer toward the local governments, which, again, is a major step forward. It is anticipated that that issue will probably come to light by legislators. So I'm sure that that issue will be discussed again. As we gather information from each of you and the departments, your input and direction on that will be helpful, and we'll, you know, work on that issue as we go forward. I'm not aware of a specific proposal or an ask right now on home rule, but again, it's strongly anticipated that that issue will be a topic of concern during the next session.
The final question that I have is in relation to the 3% property tax cap. The Nevada League, are they taking that up at all, or is that a point of conversation? Because I know that our municipality is... That's something that's on our list of, for sure, discussion items. But I'm not sure where does that play in regards to one of the BDRs moving forward to address that concern for the City of Las Vegas?
We appreciate the question. It's a very important one. I know in discussing with Wes Henderson, our executive director of the league, that this is a priority issue for the league. It's also a priority issue for NACO, and you're aware that we're working in conjunction with the big five cities, the school district metro, and other entities with grave concern about the property tax issue. So it's not quite clear whether that will be a committee bill, an individual legislator's bill, or even a priority for the state at a higher level. We can hope that that's the case and try to push the issue to that degree. I think part of the challenge will be for us to find the solution to that particular issue so that we have a unified approach and ask to address that. I know that it will be a league priority. Whether or not it's a league, BDR is unclear at this point, but we will be advocating for addressing that issue in every realm that we can, whether it's the forum, the league, NACO, or other partnerships. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to that, Councilman Barlow. At the last League of Cities meeting that we had, that did come up, the property tax. And one of the things I recommended, that it be a big topic of discussion at the annual meeting in Sparks, so all the cities can have input on what they think this property tax issue is, how it's going to affect their city. We didn't discuss actually doing a BDR, but I think there'll probably be some discussions coming out of the Nevada League of Cities Meeting in Sparks on if somebody will initiate some kind of legislative fix. So I think we're going to have some good discussion up there because all the cities are going to have some input on it. Thanks.
What I'd like to add to that, too, is yesterday, we did have, and we've had ongoing meetings for the past three and a half years, of all mayors, all five mayors. And yesterday, we had a Hello Mayor TV program taped. Thank you, Mr. Riggelman, and your staff. A great job. It was wonderful fun, but we invited our city manager to come up and the cooperative of mayors. And I'm going to let you respond, if you would, Ms. Fretwell, and what we have asked you to look into in reference to this specific item.
Thank you, Mayor. Consistent with many of the things that Brian talked about, there are quite a few groups that are working on this issue of property tax. The Southern Nevada Forum has had a series of robust conversations about this as well. But our plan is to continue to work with all of the large cities right now to try and identify some potential fixes that then could be a part of these overall... and identify some potential fixes that then could be a part of these overall regional and statewide conversations, whether they be at the league, Naco, et cetera. So we'll be working with the mayors, with the city managers, with the finance directors to try and formulate some changes to statute that then would impact the stability of property tax for local governments. This is maybe an unexpected and possibly unintended outcome that we're experiencing right now, and having swift legislative action would assist us in remedying some of the impacts of that unexpected impact. So, we're working through that. We are working with the consortium of other local governments, including the school district, the counties, Washoe and Clark, through the finance directors to try and develop some of those strategies. And then, as we continue to develop our legislative platform, Councilman Barlow, that's likely where your position on those kinds of measures would land. If we felt we needed to do our own bill, we could do that, but I have a feeling there will be a community-wide need assessed, and so a bill by the city would be trying to impact statewide issues, and that's a little unusual for us to effect, not that we couldn't. So we'll probably be trying to find, as Brian says, another home for that bill that fits more consistently with the statewide impact of the property tax formula.
So, too, I might add to that, yesterday's request of Ms. Fretwell was to get city managers and directors of finance together to come back to the different councils as we did with the More Cops Initiative. We passed, every single city passed unanimously a resolution to support the More Cops. And so, our thought was in conversation, asking them to pull together, working with the other bodies, then to bring that all back to each of us at each of our councils so it could be shared and we could perhaps be instrumental in creating something of significance. So just wanted to let you know that was yesterday where you saw the mayors wandering around city hall. That's what they were doing. Any other questions, comments? Mayor Protem?
I think I do, Mayor. In light of what's going on with the release of records that the legislature's dealing with right now, the public records part of this, Mr. McEnally, can you talk about that? Because we, the city, are, we pride ourselves on our transparency and, you know, I mean, we put everything on the web that we possibly can, for heaven's sakes. You want to talk about how that may play out?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, we anticipate that there will be a public records bill in this next session. There seems to be an issue each session related to public records. Sometimes it has legs, sometimes it does not. You know, last session, the league had a bill that tried to address the amount and demands of some of those public records, and that bill had a hearing and that was it. I, since this is the legislative purview of sort of managing how they handle their public records, not quite sure what legislator will take that particular issue on, but I'm sure it will fold into a discussion on other public records issues. I know for us, and working closely with the clerk's office, public storage and the amount and volume of our hard copy records, if you will, is extremely phenomenal, and we're trying to elevate that discussion with legislators by inviting them to see how we go through our documentation storage issue and the doubles and triples and duplicate efforts. It is a significant cost. That doesn't mean that we would be trying to build barriers in sharing that or being more transparent, but there are ways to manage public records in a more effective way. We also know that that's an issue for library and archives up in Carson City. They struggle with the same issue as well, especially as we move into technology where you can store records in a more limited, concise way and make it easier to find them as well.
Thank you. If I can continue, Mayor, with your permission. I'm less concerned about the storage of those public records, I'm more concerned about the access of public records. It seems the legislature is not held the same standard that we as local governments are in regards to the access to public documentation and their actions, and I'm wondering if that may be addressed in this legislative session as well.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, I will, as you asked that question, I think that it is an extremely important issue. I know that Kelly and I have challenges in trying to find minutes from meetings that have happened in the fall after a legislative session, when two months' worth of minutes are not even available on the website. So yes, there is a different standard for the legislature and our local governments and governments throughout the state of Nevada. I'm sure that that conversation will come up, it's just not yet clear in what forum that would be.
Okay, with your permission again, Mayor, it's going on now, Mr. McEnally. I mean, it's happening today, as a matter of fact, the limited access of data and information that anyone can access from the legislature. So that conversation is going on in this community today, and will probably continue up until legislative session. So I just wanted to make a note of that. Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. McEnally.
Thank you both very, very much. I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
I would move to accept the report, and thank you both very much.
Thank you both. And there's a motion, and please vote, and please post. You know, we've had, Mayor Protem, we've had that discussion so often, we're subject to the open meeting law, and the one place that makes the law is not subject to open meeting law, and it's just, it's backwards. It's upside down.
It's not right. It's, you know, we're held to a certain standard. I think our lawmakers need to be held to that same standard.
Without question, and all the secret small meetings that go on, we can't meet four of us together. So, I mean, we've been talking about that for several years now, and so hopefully, something will come out of it. Government moves slowly.
Thank you, Mayor.
And territorially, it does too. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 56. Report by Department of Human Resources regarding the City of Las Vegas Compensation Program and Affirmation of the City's Commitment to Gender Equity. We don't have a lady as part of this gender equity making this presentation?
I was going to make a comment about that. I was going to grab somebody, bring him up here.
Thank you, thank you.
By way of introduction, with me, by the way, for the record, Mark Vincent, Chief Financial Officer for the city. With me is Andy Spurlock, one of our senior compensation analysts, and Andy is going to do a presentation today, but by way of introduction, I thought maybe I could share a few things with you. Back in 2011, we published a city manager information report on our new employee model. You might recall, some of you were on the board back then, you might recall that. And in that model, we identified some things that we were doing, and one of it was our new compensation program. A part of that was, and I'll read from this, you know, a comprehensive approach to a fair wage, automatic market surveys, compensation analysis, and adjustment to market rates. And so that was part of our compensation program that we identified in that simmer, and we do have a formal wage program. And today, that program looks at equitable placement for things like new hires. Where does a new hire fit within the range based upon their education experience? We have employees that get reclassified, different classifications, or get promoted, or even transferred. And so, we need to be able to make sure that they get equitable placement in those ranges. And we also have an annual merit program, particularly for our executives and appointives. Obviously, our classified employees are in a grade and step process, but still, for about 10% of our employees, we have a annual merit program. So, and then, last year, I think it was last year, I think it was Mayor Protem requested that we perhaps look at gender equity specifically. I think there was a resolution that he may have asked us to consider, and then you all, I think as a board, gave us some direction to look specifically into gender equity. And so, Andy's going to do a presentation about that specifically and how that fits into our wage program, and I'll stand by in case you have any questions or comments or if I can help in any way. So with that, I'll get out of Andy's way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor, Council, good morning. I just wanted to give you an overview of the issue of gender equity pay and the efforts done by the city human resources department. I will mention to Mayor, primarily, the employment manager, Lynn Barbosa, a female, and my colleague, Sue Brown, another female. I just happen to be the one to be speaking today, but we wanted to give you an update on this issue. As you can see here, just some, several quotes, all kinds of statistics from different organizations, you'll see the general trend in the first three is that the median earnings of women as a percent of men's has gone from about 1980, early 80s to now, gone from pretty much the same place to the same place, somewhere around the early, I'm sorry, the low 60% up to anywhere from the high 70s to the mid 80s, depending on who you're listening to. This is a significant improvement, obviously, but it took a generation for it to be achieved. One of the things I'd like for you to pay particular attention to, though, in the third quote and the fourth quote, the text highlighted in yellow, is when you start to break down the data, the numbers do improve quite significantly. For women ages 25 to 34, Pew Research said 93% of men's pay, and at the very bottom, for the exact same work, meaning the same job title, it's as much as 97% of pay. This is an extremely important concept that I want to emphasize to you as we're looking at our own data for city of Las Vegas. We're going to look at three things, just going to give you a quick overview, the types of inequities, what our efforts are in this area and the challenges that we face, and then some final recommendations. There's really two. It's very important to understand that these two are something that we're always working on, but sometimes, efforts in one area can undermine efforts in the other area, and I'll give you some actual examples using city of Las Vegas when we get to that. But gender equity and staffing would be all things related to the placement of people into positions, including internal movements, internal job promotion opportunities, but primarily external hiring. So it's all of the efforts done by our employment division to place females into jobs that have traditionally been occupied by men for many years, and trying to always keep an open mind about the placement of females into these positions. The second one is more salary decisions. This also is salary decisions at the time of the job offer, but then how we treat females versus males going forward throughout the course of employment, how we give them increases, the promotional opportunities available to them, and so on. On the employment side, run by Lynn Barbosa, she's on the East Coast this week and could not make the meeting. We do submit an affirmative action plan every year. The four aspects to it, there's a plan intent, which is what we are trying to do, it's what I talked about previously, trying as best as possible to place females into positions, both in the new hire phase and in the internal promotion opportunity phase. We have planned measurements, which is, we are trying to look at what our expectation should be of females, let's say, in a certain occupation, or specifically a certain job, a specific job posting, job title, and that would be based on where they're at proportionally in our applicant pool. So based on the proportion of our applicant pool that are female, we should be expecting to maybe be hiring a similar portion of females. And so we look at that versus what relatively is going on in our actual workforce. And the difference between those two would be referred to as placement goals. So this is a non-binding recommendation that we give to departments that say, hey, look, we ran these numbers, this we think should be your placement goal for percent of females, but this is not something that a department absolutely has to follow. Again, it's only a recommendation from the human resources department. HR Class and Comp, Classification and Compensation Division, this is the area that my colleague, Sue Brown, and I work in. This is the work that we specifically do. I am sorry, it's a lot of data on one screen here, I have several of those, I apologize. The most important thing that we do, and I'll show you an example of this in a moment, is we do salary reviews for appointive and executive actions. These are our non-classified groups. So when somebody in this group is hired into the city or takes a promotion in the city, Sue and I will do a salary review spreadsheet. We're looking at their time of service, qualifications, so on, and we make a recommendation as to where they should probably be sitting in a salary range for a new hire, or what kind of promotional increase we should be considering. Again, I'll give you an actual one of those in just a moment. The other thing that we do is, it's a long name, I just call it the July Program because it's every July, but the Annual Salary Adjustment Analysis of Appointed and Executive Merit Increases and LUPsum Bonus. So this is the pool that is given out to departments to give salary increases to the two non-represented groups of employees we have, which are the appointives and the executives. Very, very important statistic that we are proud of is, in the last year or two, we did all the calculations, females received about anywhere from a 10th to 2/10th of a percent higher average total comp increase in 2015 than males did. Obviously, if this was flipped, I would be concerned. It's not, we've been trending very well in this area. The third thing that we do is called a Biddle Report, it's just the name of the outside consultant. They take our own data, it's more for validation, it's a lot of the work we could do ourselves, but they do a lot of the averaging by job title for male and female, and male, female, and race, and show us differences and so on. The challenges that we have are a couple. First of all, let me say that, working for Betsy, you are working in a high-performance organization. I will never deny it. Las Vegas is a high-performing organization. But the formal definition of pay-for-performance in my particular field means that there's a direct link usually between some kind of a performance score and a recommended or an allowed increase or a range of increase, and it may also depend on where they're sitting in a salary range. We don't necessarily have that per se, but we still have very tight monitoring over it, but our July Program, so to speak, is really budget-based, where we give a pool of money tightly controlled, studied before it's given out, and then given to the departments to spend on salary increases for appointives and executives. Our other challenge is in the area of data tracking. Sometimes you think the simplest pieces of information are available, but they're really not. One of the things that we might have in our system is the total amount of years that an employee has with the city, but that's only one piece of information. It would be much more relevant to know how long they've been sitting in their job title. And yes, we would have that, but we manually look it up, but we don't have it instantly available to pull up for, let's say, 300 employees at one time. And the biggest piece of information that we don't have is the amount of time that an employee has been in an occupation, which may include time that's not with the city. So if you're looking at somebody that was a 10-year accountant before they came to the city, and they've now been with the city for two years, they're not really a two-year accountant, they're really a 12-year accountant, but that's really not reflected anywhere. And so it makes analysis very, very difficult. On the front end, we do look at that experience because that's what we're looking at for a new hire salary review. So I'm going to show you a salary review. I apologize to the audience, it's a lot of data packed into a small space, they won't be able to see really specific data, but that's not really the point. I just wanted to conceptually walk people through the areas of the salary review. Councilmembers on your screens, though, should be able to see probably more detailed data. So I'm just going to go through these red circles area, these are the major components of a salary survey, sorry, a salary review that we do. We have the candidate information, what job they're applying for or considering, their supervisor. The next one, we list all the relevant comparisons, mainly their future supervisor-to-be, their peers in their department that they're going into, often usually the same job classification title, sometimes not though, but just others that we consider good comparables. The next slide is, we list service date information, time and job directly, if it's relevant, and base salary information on the existing employees. The next slide, down below, you see it says MQs. This is the minimum qualifications of the job that they're being considered for, we pull that right off the job description. The next slide, this is the actual candidate's information. We've redacted all the confidential information from this one, so you see a lot of blank lines, and that's just what we're comparing up. How qualified is this person compared to what the job is requiring, and compared to what their peers are. The next slide, the red text in the upper right corner, my colleague Sue and I will come up with eventually a small band of information, a small band of the larger salary range, and this is what we recommend to be the starting salary for the employee. It's usually a few thousand dollars wide to give some flexibility.
Could I ask you a question right there? If you go up higher, please.
I'm sorry?
To the top line of the slide, Management Analyst Two.
The next one?
That range, no, right where you are, what you've got circled.
Okay.
Why is it up to eighty-seven thousand, whereas your recommended starting is fifty-five to sixty?
This is a new hire salary ra, this is for a new hire, a new hired Management Analyst Two. The total range for that Management Analyst Two is the forty-nine thousand to the eighty-seven thousand. The red text is the band that we're recommending they be hired in.
Brand, and brand-new employee.
Brand-new to the city.
Thank you.
So there's a little bit of experience that we thought was worthy, so we did not hire, we did not recommend, in that instance, to be hired right at the minimum.
Mayor, if I may, I'm not sure Andy quite said that, but again, he's looking at the education and experience of the candidate as it fits with some of the incumbents we already have. And so the bandwidth recommendation that he and Sue are making, in this case, is based upon their review of the applicant as they compare to the incumbents in that job classification.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So ultimately, we end up with that recommendation. Sometime later, we'll supply this to the Employment Division, and they'll supply it to the Hiring Authority, usually the department head of what we're recommending. I will let you know that about eighty-five percent of the time, our recommendations are followed. So we feel that we do pretty accurate work and that we're on top of the marketplace pretty well. Ultimately, we'll hear back from the Employment Division as to what the actual starting offer was. And you can see this at the top of the spreadsheet, the last number is the sixty-eight. This would be one instance where they went outside of our recommended ban. But to do so, this other fifteen percent, just to let you know, this requires chief approval, which is one of Betsy's direct reports that oversees the affected department.
And if I might, I'd just ask one other question on this. For the city, do you look into the county? Do you have comparables so that we are not hiring someone at a rate far below what they can get somewhere else, and therefore, we lose them?
Yes, ma'am, in two aspects. One, structurally, we're always trying to be relative to those other agencies. So the actual range that we have would be comparable, but that would never really get out of whack with the other agencies, because we spend a lot of our time keeping up with them, so to speak. In terms of the specifics, it would probably be more relevant to look at the very bottom of that sheet, which is the person's actual qualifications. So, for example, if it was a legislative analyst and they've never done any government affairs work and so on, that's where that would come up, is how experienced are they specifically relative to what we need for the classification? I hope that answers your question. Okay? All right. The next thing I want to do is show you some specific data. Again, it's a very, another busy slide, a lot of information, but it shows you some of the challenges that we have. One of the biggest problems when you look at gender equity is the propensity to look at the big number, the number that includes the entire population. The quotes that I gave you at the very beginning were national numbers affecting three hundred million Americans. You really need to break it down, and this slide will emphasize this. This slide represents all of the employee groups at City of Las Vegas. These are all bargaining units in the yellow bars, but pay attention to the two bars in the orange, the third and the fourth one. Those are appointive and exec. Those are our non-classified employees. That's important because all of the other groups are in a step system that have a very defined rate of pay, defined increases from the beginning of the salary range to the end of the salary range. The appointive and the exec have open ranges, so to speak. We have a minimum, we have a max, but we do not have defined steps between them. And so they're subject to a little bit more variability in giving out these increases during July. So we want to pay attention to those two numbers. If you see the black number in the middle of the bar, that's the percent that females are making as a percent of males. So for appointive, it's eighty-one percent, and for exec, it's ninety percent. But if you don't mind, if I can give you a statistics lesson for just a second, an example of that with appointive would be the fact that, in that group alone, we have great diversity in occupations. So in the appointive area, we have three female city receptionists who are in this group, non-classified, because they've been deemed to be doing confidential work for city management and elected officials. They're in there. But what's also in there is a male medical doctor in the fire department. So you can see, we have great diversity of actual pay there that will always affect this kind of number. So it's very important to keep that in mind. I'll give you one more example. If you go over to Fire Fifty-Six, the third bar from the right, okay, the number looks good there, in terms of female as a percent of male, a hundred and two, but we don't have enough females in that group. This is our traditional fire suppression. This would be your firefighters, your fire engineers, and your fire captains. So you can see at the top of the bar, only four percent of those people are females, and the actual number of females is only twenty-three. But let me give you a quick example of how one number can affect another number. We do have a handful of females that are at the maximum of salary range for a firefighter, for a fire engineer, and for a fire captain. So what happens if one of those females decides to retire? You know, a natural process. Well, the first thing it's going to do is it's going to hurt our female-to-male salary ratio, because a high-paid female left the organization. Here's the dilemma, though. If we were to replace her with another female who will have to start at the bottom, it's going to further aggravate our female-to-male ratio. So the important thing is that we focus on these things separately. So we have one division focusing on staffing numbers, and another division focusing on equity to the degree that they can monitor it and control it. But sometimes your staffing numbers will force fluctuation, your staffing actions will force some fluctuation in this ratio, and that's why it will just always be fluctuating. I would like to say that it's only going to go in one direction and one direction only forever, but that's just not the way the world works in terms of how people leave and enter the workforce. So that's just for your information. Lastly, for recommendations, I like to categorize this recommendations page as it comes down to two things: more communication and more data. Betsy loves that. Betsy loves more communication and more data, so that's what we're going to try to give her. All these things could be categorized into one of those two areas. The first one is, we're going to revisit city manager approval requirements for new hire salaries and promotional increases, and identify reporting needs of the CMO. For example, is Betsy and her team seeing everything that they want to see in this area? Are we giving them the information that they want? We'll be continuing to work with them on that. Number two, our July process, the Annual Salary Adjustment Analysis, is keep breaking this information down, okay? The one thing about breaking the information down is you get better data, but the problem is you also get smaller sample sizes. And you don't want to make inferences off very, very small sample sizes where you have, let's say, one male and three females in one classification. You don't want to make huge inferences off of that. But we want to keep breaking this data down for Betsy. Number three is, we want to strengthen pay-for-performance attributes of this July Program. By four steps, this is usually arranged short-term to longer-term. We want to account for all performance scores of appointives and execs, meaning we expect their management to make sure that a score is turned in. Two, we want to summarize all of this performance score for Betsy and the CMO, so they know, how are departments doing overall on performance relative to her own impressions of how that department did, let's say, in the last year on performance. Number three would be correlating performance rating scores to the increases. Are they jiving? Are they making sense? Is the score being given to an employee matching up to what they're getting for performance increases? And number four, maybe longer-term, is more formalize that into a true pay-for-performance program, which is some kind of a matrix where you can look at it and say, if you got, if you did this kind of performance and you're maybe sitting this place in your range, you should be expected to either get this increase or this range of an increase. Number four is, we're putting in a talent management software. This is going to take place over the next two to three years. No guarantees on this one, but because it is a lot about compiling employee information, their work history, work history and qualifications prior to coming to the city, we're hoping that it has that kind of information that shows us, like I talked about before, just, you know, how qualified or experienced of an accountant are they? So that will help us in that regard. So at this time, I'd like to entertain any questions, comments that you have?
If I may, your honor.
And if I'd like, I'd just like to thank you, great report, and I know it's, I mean, it took a lot of time, and I am sure you're still underwater with it, because there's so many. I was just leaning over to Mayor Pro Tem, and I said, so much of this is so subjective. You know, it's like testing for college, the more they fiddle with it and make it subjective because they put in assays, the more ridiculous it becomes, and to deal with facts, but you have so many variables here. I mean, oh, my. So yours?
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that. And Andy, to you and Sue and Mr. Vincent, your team, I know you guys have spent a lot of time on this, so I appreciate you doing this. And Ms. Fretwell, I think this is a good internal look at this organization, and how we function, and how we address these issues. So I certainly appreciate this in regards to that, and I think it's incumbent of us, as a leader in this community, as a leading government in this community, to make that statement, that we care about our female employees, and we want to see that pay equity the same across the board. So I applaud you and your efforts in directing and guiding this, because I know you've been as impatient as I have with it. So you guys did a great job, thank you. I will say this, ma'am, I think today's employers are looking at different factors as they're hiring new hires that aren't normally, would have been the same when I first filled out my first job application. So I didn't want to put that on the record as well. With your indulgence and permission, ma'am, I have invited Erica Washington from the Make It Work organization, if she can share a few words about what she's been trying to do in this community in regards to gender equity and pay equity, with your permission?
And any reports, too, Ms. Washington, that you have in some format that you could turn into our city clerk?
Yes.
A copy, please.
Okay, thank you so much. So, good morning, everyone. It is still morning, I think. My name is Erica Washington, and I am the Nevada State Director for the Make It Work Campaign. Make It Work is a national campaign, uniting communities of people who believe that hard-working Americans shouldn't have to choose between their families and earning a living. And here in Nevada, we're working to advance economic security for women, men, and families across the state. Women are key to their families, the modern-day workplace, and thriving economy, but chances are, chances are good that women, you know, are being paid less than their male coworkers in the same job, whether they know it or not. African-American women who work full-time are paid just sixty cents for every dollar paid to a white man. For Latina women, it's fifty-five cents. African-American women have had to work twenty months to equal what a white man earns in a year. Latina women have to work twenty-two months to equal what white men earn in a year. Such a wide gap has compounded effects over a woman's lifetime. Women lose somewhere between five hundred thousand and one-point-two million over the course of a lifetime due to the wage gap. This is not just a problem for women and their families, but also for both the state and national economy. Women's contribution to the GDP translates into more than one-point-seven trillion in greater output. In fact, without women's contributions to the workforce, the gross domestic product would be eleven percent lower. Too many women don't even know they are being paid less. Compensation data is often hidden. Sixty percent of private sector employees work in an environment that formally prohibits and discourages discussing salary information. I commend the city, and more specifically, Mayor Pro Tem Ross and Human Resource Department for compiling this report and publicly committing to alleviating this problem that affects so many working women and families in this state. Paying women fairly is not only the right thing to do, it also helps women and their families make ends meet and even get ahead. Many women rely on two, many families rely on two incomes and still barely make ends meet. So, so many Americans living paycheck to paycheck, equal pay for equal work could mean saving for a home, retiring with dignity, or sending your children to college. American is, America is a nation founded on the ideal that all of us are created equal. That should hold true at home and at work. Paying people fairly for the work they do shouldn't depend on their gender. Nevadans have a lot of power right now, and they are poised to use it to stand up for issues that matter, and I hope that all Nevada counties, as well as the state and private sector corporations, will follow your lead in, on a comprehensive commitment to pay equity. You can find our full policy plans for gender equity, affordable childcare, and paid family leave on our website, makeitwork.org, but I will also submit those policies for your review.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Washington, for being here and putting that on the record, because I think it's important that we understand what's happening out there in the private sector just as much as what's happening internally with our local governments. And I think this is a statement to all of the governments in the state of Nevada that we take this very seriously. And again, I can't thank your team enough for putting, compiling this, because it's only going to help you, Ms. Fretwell. And I kind of timed this right, so you could also recognize the three women who have a huge influence on this city council for Women's History Month. So I hope you kind of see that correlation, Ms. Fretwell, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Washington, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Vincent, yes, please.
Mayor, if I may, just housekeeping, I neglected to mention that Dan Tarwater, HR Director, would have been here to introduce Andy, but he also was out of town on other HR business, so that's why I filled in for him.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Spurlock, appreciate it. This was a report, so we need no action on that, and a very good report indeed. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and so we're on to Agenda Item Fifty-Eight.
Fifty-seven.
What am I, fifty-seven? Is my fifty cents stuck there? There it is. Okay, a report by Mr. Art, Bill Art, Director of Economic and Urban Development on the current and future status regarding Symphony Park. And I hope you nailed Mike Bison, or Bissen.
Bissen.
He looks really to be good for us.
We did, and thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Good morning, for the record, Bill Art, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This presentation is to update you on Symphony Park, and I think this is a really important presentation, and it's, we're really at a critical point for Symphony Park. I want to read you a quote from Jim Collins, who wrote, "Good to Great: Why Some Companies Make the Leap and Others Don't." Jim Collins wrote, "Good is the enemy of great, and that is one of the key reasons why we have so little that becomes great." Now, Mr. Collins was writing about businesses and companies, and why some companies achieve greatness and some don't, and some ultimately fail. But I believe this framework is really a good framework for thinking about communities, about communities and their downtowns, and neighborhoods and downtowns. We are working on Symphony Park as a new urban mixed-use neighborhood, and we, as a department at Economic and Urban Development, our entire team, certainly under the direction and leadership of Betsy Fretwell, our city manager, and Scott Adams, our deputy city manager, we are committed to greatness, and I believe Symphony Park is positioned for greatness. I want to walk you through where we've been, where we're at, and where we're headed. Our current master plan in creating it, we actually came up with this in 2005, and it started with thinking about how are we creating a new urban mixed-use neighborhood in downtown? And it's really a collection of four neighborhoods, where the neighborhood to the southern end of the Symphony Park campus is an academic center of excellence for medicine, thinking about healthcare not only today, but the healthcare of the future. We also were thinking about performing arts, continuing culture in downtown, and we have a performing arts neighborhood anchored by the Smith Center for the Performing Arts. So performing arts and the creative class for any downtown in today's world are incredibly important, and we wanted to make sure performing arts were well-represented in Symphony Park. We wanted to have new residential living in downtown. We saw that in 2005. I think today you see it even more so. People want to live in downtowns throughout this country. Las Vegas is no exception, and we see the demand only increasing for downtown living, and we think Symphony Park can be a big part of the future for downtown living in Las Vegas. And then finally, a specialty neighborhood, which would house specialty uses, which have changed over time, but the original vision has been, and today still is, having an anchor on the northern end of Symphony Park that would complement what is already a thriving entertainment district at Fremont Street Experience, and what has become an equally thriving district on the eastern end of Fremont, in the Fremont East Entertainment District. So we have this collection of neighborhoods that really are four neighborhoods in one. How that comes together is a new urban mixed-use neighborhood in Symphony Park. This is the current master plan in Symphony Park. What we had to do with Symphony Park as a sixty-one-acre block canvas when we purchased the property, the former rail yards, was create a master plan. How would we put all these neighborhoods in place? So this is the physical plan to achieve that vision. So you see here, blocks that are created by a street network and a grid which allows for new projects to take shape and come into Symphony Park. And this plan and this street network and these blocks essentially have been the same since December of 2005. So we've been working with a lot of great partners on a lot of great projects. Some of these projects have come to fruition, and it's important to Some of these projects have come to fruition, and it's important to kind of review how these took shape and how they position us for the future. The Cleveland Clinic-Lou Ruvo Center for Brain Health may be best known for its world-class architecture by Mr. Frank Gehry. This stunning building, almost 70,000 square feet, has really changed the conversation about architecture in our community, but maybe more importantly, it's changed the conversation about healthcare. Cleveland Clinic, as a hospital system, is one of the top five hospital systems in the U.S. and is consistently ranked that way in U.S. News and World Report. I believe in the future Cleveland Clinic will be more known, rather than its architecture, for the impact it's having on its community, providing world-class care to patients that are suffering from neurodegenerative diseases. This center really is the healthcare of the future. Today, they treat over 21,000 patients annually from not just Las Vegas and the Las Vegas Valley, but across the entire state. They have clinical trials and research that draws physicians from all over the world to see the level of care and quality that's happening at the clinic. But the clinic doesn't want to stop here. They are still trying to expand the Center for Brain Health, and it's important that they do so because there's unmet demand. In Nevada today, as shared with us by Mr. Larry Ruvo, who founded this effort, over 28,000 people have Alzheimer's, over 10,000 people have Parkinson's, and over 4,000 people have multiple sclerosis. So they are studying diseases of the mind, neurodegenerative diseases, and this, it only continues to increase, and they're really trying to match our brain span with our lifespan as we tend to age in place and the longevity tends to increase over time. So what Cleveland Clinic is doing is incredibly important, so because of that, we're giving them room to grow. We do have two parcels that they have an option to purchase. Parcel JK is a purchase option, and then Parcel A2, which you see here in red on the map, is actually a piece of land that they're going to buy to meet their current needs for parking, but long-term to add a second building to support the activities at the Center for Brain Health. The Smith Center for the Performing Arts, a lot of folks have thought of the Smith Center as the new living room for downtown and the entire Las Vegas Valley, and I think that's a neat description. And it's really fitting because the Smith Center now has seen over 2 million visitors go through its doors, and that is an incredible accomplishment. It's one of the highest-attended performing arts centers in the country, and who would have thought that? Just a few years ago, we were the largest community in North America without a performing arts center to house symphony orchestra, to house ballet and our Nevada Ballet Theater Company. And so we're having new events, not just for visitors, but also for locals, which is really creating a lot of energy and buzz on bringing people into downtown that quite frankly hadn't thought of coming to downtown in years past. The Discovery Children's Museum continues to be a popular draw for families, and it is expanding the amenity mix of bringing all of our community rallying to coming to downtown. The Discovery Children's Museum is drawing families. It was rated as the People's Choice, the most recent Reader's Ball in the Review Journal for Best of Las Vegas, for Best Museum. A lot of competition. We have a lot of great museums in downtown, but this is an important anchor, not just for Symphony Park, but for our downtown. We have a lot of projects that are in the planning stages which are starting to take shape, and I'd like to recap those. The Molaski Group of Companies, which has been one of the preeminent developers, developers in Southern Nevada for decades, is continuing to invest in downtown. They've built the Molaski Corporate Center. They have a planned 250,000-square-foot office campus on Parcel E. The first building that they're desiring to build is a headquarters for the Department of Business and Industry. They hope to hear soon whether or not they're the successful bidder for that project, but this campus would be 250,000 square feet of new office space in downtown in Symphony Park, continuing to position Las Vegas as a center for business and commerce and making it compete not just throughout the valley, but for other downtowns across the southwestern United States.
And please mention that those bending buildings are not an optical illusion, but they are in fact real.
That is real, and that's a design element meant to complement Mr. Gehry's architecture. So when I say positioned for greatness and committed to greatness, not just in the quality of our partners and the types of projects that they're delivering, but the architecture too. We really want world-class architecture in Symphony Park. Newland Communities, one of the largest residential builders in the entire United States, has remained a committed partner for Las Vegas. They have Parcels C and N in Symphony Park, and I'll show that map again for reference. They're working on new residential. They're scheduled to try to move forward and break ground first quarter of calendar 2017 with low-rise and mid-rise apartment living. All the market studies for residential in downtown Las Vegas, not just from Newland, but from all the partners that we work with, are starting to turn the corner. We have a ton of interest in new residential development, not just for Symphony Park, but throughout downtown, and that's going to be one of the big efforts of our team moving forward. How do we get these residential projects going? Because if we have people living year-round, 24/7 in downtown, that creates a huge impact on a downtown consumer spending, people working downtown, living where they work. This is really, I think, maybe the biggest piece of the puzzle on how we turn the corner as a downtown and continue to thrive as a downtown. We're working with the Art Museum in Liminous Park in figuring out the best location for the museum. I realize the text on this map is small, but it, wanted to give you a snapshot into the insight of the kind of work that your team is doing with a lot of help from a lot of outside experts on trying to figure out how all the pieces fit together. We're trying to find a location for the museum that is the best location for the museum, but also keeps as much land free for new commercial development, new private development, private companies, private operators, which will help our redevelopment agency and new taxes, create more employees coming to downtown, working downtown, create more residents living downtown. And so we've identified these five locations as possible locations. We're not fixed on any one location. We have heard your feedback loud and clear. We're going to try to find a location that is a tax-exempt location today, such as at or near the park, as you can see here on the red stars, or merge that museum development into a bigger mixed-use campus to where we do get a bigger bang for the buck. So more work to be done here. Museum is in active fundraising. Their next threshold target is set for August of this year, and if they hit their threshold fundraising, then we have to sit down with the museum and nail down the location for the museum. But again, performing arts, showing you the vision earlier, and Art Museum is a perfect fit for Symphony Park. It's in close proximity to the Arts District, and we think there'll be a lot of synergy in both Symphony Park and the Arts District, working together to drive the expansion of arts and culture in our downtown and in our community. This is probably the most important slide. I'm going to spend a moment on this. There's a perception, I think, in the marketplace that Symphony Park is not open for business, and I want to counter that notion. We are open for business. We are looking for exciting new projects. We are looking for world-class partners. As I mentioned earlier, we have some great projects today that have already come to fruition and are really changing not just Symphony Park and downtown, but changing our community. We have some projects that are planned projects that will do the same, but what this has left us with is a lot of land available for new development. All of these parcels shaded in yellow are available for new projects and new development. One caveat, not each parcel is owned today by the city of Las Vegas, but all of our partners are looking for new development projects on these pieces of land. For instance, on the northern end Parcel PQ, Forest City is looking for development partners to build a new project on PQ. Parcel B, which was under contract with the Cleveland Clinic, we worked very closely with the clinic to open up that parcel for new projects which would fit the vision of the Academic Center of Excellence for Healthcare and Medicine in the southern end of the campus. So if you look at it visually, we have an incredible amount of land for new development, and it's strategically positioned to help new developers with projects where, in the rest of downtown, it's hard to get a whole city block. It's hard to get a piece of land where you can just build from scratch. I've heard Councilman Barlow use the phrase "a blank canvas." A lot of this land really is a blank canvas right now, and we're looking for great partners and great projects, and we're committed to find those. We're continuing infrastructure. One of the most important things about infrastructure is it's in place. We have infrastructure in the ground for these parcels to support new development. On top of that, we're putting additional infrastructure in. We're working on a trail system with our City Public Works team to do some trails, linear trails, that would not just connect Symphony Park to itself, but connect Symphony Park to the rest of downtown. Maybe the most important piece of this is this red arrow which shows a linear trail running parallel to the Union Pacific Railline. And this, like the High Line in Manhattan, like other great trails throughout the country, we think this could be the next great trail, urban trail, in the entire country, and we're putting a lot of time and effort into planning that and making sure it's done right and done well. We're planning a vehicular bridge. This bridge has to connect Symphony Park on the west side of the rail line to the rest of downtown, on the east side of the rail line. This is a schematic rendering. This is not necessarily the final location for the bridge, but it shows you the kind of iconic architecture that we're looking to have a vehicular bridge in Symphony Park. We're having a lot of discussions with all stakeholders, as well as property owners, which would be directly or indirectly affected, and we have not arrived on a final solution for the bridge, but we are working on a funding package through our Public Works team and a physical plan that will make sense not just for the city, but for our partners as well. We're working on parking infrastructure. We have an approved tourism improvement district to support parking for new retail and commercial development moving in the Symphony Park. Today, there's parking demand for all those uses that I mentioned. In the future, it's only going to increase. We're looking to time this garage and execute in conjunction with new development. It's not our desire to build a garage, finish it, open it, run it, and have it sit mostly vacant. We want to see new projects, and we believe that we are positioned to get new development in Symphony Park in the immediate future, and so we'd like to time the construction of this garage in conjunction with new development on some of these parcels. We have not set a final parcel or location for this garage, but this tourism improvement district funding is a key piece in allowing us the capital to move forward today with a garage. So we're looking at primarily three parcels. One is Parcel B, and you see here a schematic rendering of what that might look like immediately at the front door of the Smith Center and the Smith Center's campus. Parcel L, which is on the back door, if you will, the Smith Center campus, adjacent to the pedestrian bridge. An advantage here is we can connect this garage to 500 Main Street and create a super garage, if you will, to serve not just Symphony Park, but all of downtown. A fact that many residents may not know, but probably a lot of our downtown workers know, is 500 Main Street today serves more than just the city. We have other employees outside of the city, City Hall itself, that are using 500 Main Street, and there is a big demand for employee parking in downtown, just like you see in other major downtowns, and this would help us meet that need. And then finally Parcel G, which is on the opposite end of the park from the Smith Center in the center of Symphony Park. This is again a schematic showing the possibility of doing a new garage to support new development. So what this does is it gives us a lot of flexibility and leverage in supporting new projects moving forward. I'd like to wrap up with next steps and our kind of call to action, not necessarily limited to the council as a board giving us direction, but really to the entire community. Symphony Park is open for business. We're looking for new projects. We're looking to meet with the local development community. Those discussions are already happening. We're meeting with local developers on a regular basis who have interest in Symphony Park and downtown. So we certainly want to engage who's here already. We have some great local developers, investors, and partners, and we think there's a great pool of talent here. But we don't want to limit ourselves to just the local talent pool. We're working very aggressively on getting the word out on Symphony Park on a regional and a national basis. We're going to the Urban Land Institute's Spring Meeting in Philadelphia in April, and like to thank Councilman Barlow and his support on that effort, as well as Betsy and her team for helping us support that effort, where that's the preeminent professional group for developers and investors. And so we, that's part of getting the word out on Symphony Park. We're going to be going to the Fall Conference for Urban Land Institute, which is in Dallas coming up in the fall. We're going to be going to ICSC, the RECON Conference, which is the big retail conference, and the retail conference, which we're fortunate to have in Las Vegas, and so we're going to be at that in May at RECON. We're going to be meeting with all of our local stakeholder groups. So we're going to be, you're going to be seeing our team more at NAOP events, at Las Vegas Metro Chamber of Commerce events, all the real estate networking groups, and those are just two, but there's a good half dozen or more that our team is regularly engaged with to make sure we get the word out on Symphony Park. Finally, these are really the next steps. We really need to execute these current projects, these planned projects, this calendar year. Those projects that are, I said planned, were planned projects, these really are going to have a tipping point of either moving forward or not moving forward within the next 12 months. So we're supporting our partners as best we can. We're letting them pull. We're pushing too. We want to get those projects done. But we're also marketing available sites to developers and investors. We're going to be working on building that garage to support new development. We're going to be working on installing that trail system, as well as a pedestrian bridge and a vehicular bridge, and perhaps most importantly, leveraging our key assets. When we first started Symphony Park, we were thinking of a jewel in the desert and thinking of it maybe not in the context of downtown, but we have now a downtown that is thriving. We have an incredible opportunity because of this incredible location. The two biggest advantages we have for Symphony Park are infrastructure being in place and location. This is a perfect location for all the uses that we're going after. We think we can attract not just local, but regional and national attention. We are seeing that now as properties become available for new development and investment. And you can see here, this is a map showing the districts and individual properties and their proximity to Symphony Park. I won't go through each property, but you see here the districts with the blue-shaded Las Vegas Medical District that Councilwoman Tarkanian has been such a strong champion for, and that is an important piece of the puzzle because medical is going to be our future, not just for Symphony Park and the Medical District, but for the entire Las Vegas Valley. So we need the Las Vegas Medical District to help move Symphony Park forward. We need the proximity to the gaming corridor. All of our gaming properties are performing. Downtown gaming revenue year over year is up higher than the Las Vegas Strip. They're outperforming their peers. We'd like to see that trend continue. How do we make the physical connection? How do we make the business connections to make sure we have complementary uses, not competitive uses, in Symphony Park? And a thriving Fremont East Entertainment District. We're seeing millennials increasingly coming to work downtown, coming to live downtown. You saw one of them in this morning's opening comments with a new business that is bringing a new type of industry to downtown Las Vegas. And we didn't choose them, they chose us. So how do we support those kinds of businesses and those demographics moving into downtown? This is a really important piece of the puzzle, and we're developing a very comprehensive marketing package and messaging package to make sure we communicate clearly the value proposition for Symphony Park. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be glad to take any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Art. It's fabulous and exciting for all of us. I'm wondering on that last slide, is there any way that you can work with Project NEON to do a, an overlay to show how that is going to really make access so much easier? I know it's an old slide, but it was worked on most diligently. Is there some way you could do that as a?
Absolutely. That's something that I probably didn't mention strongly enough. Infrastructure includes not just things we're doing in the ground at Symphony Park, but what's around us. We're improving all the street networks like we're doing on Main Commerce. Project NEON is happening, is moving forward, and the timing is good. Project NEON is going to be complete when a lot of these new projects are going to be just coming online or getting going. So it's really important that NEON is moving forward today, now, rather than in the distant future. That gives some certainty to developers as they're looking at, how do I get vehicles in and out of the site? I think the other piece of transportation with light rail. Light rail is really an important piece of the puzzle, high-order transit. I know there was a big contingency that went to Denver recently, supported by the RTC and Brownstein to look at what Denver's done, and that is what we're doing. We're being progressive, thinking about how do we position Symphony Park for the future? And... And Project Neon's important. Equally important is mass transit and light rail as well.
But I think with that coming onboard imminently and actually pieces of it started, if as you go back to the Urban Area Institute, that maybe you could just lay that on top of this to show that facility of movement in and out of downtown?
Absolutely.
If it's possible. But thank you. Great report. Questions, comments?
Mayor, I have one quick comment to make that is just another suggestion. We're really close to completing the downtown master plan as well. So that hits sometime in May on your council agenda for consideration. But a lot of the areas on this map are also the identified mixed-use hubs that are in the downtown plan that's correlated to the transportation. So it may be that we want to create two or three different looks at the downtown, the where we're trying to intensify development in the mixed-use hubs, to what end? The transportation nexus that you brought up. And I think Bill's point of how critically important that Maryland Parkway Light Rail line is connecting to downtown from the airport is something that we probably need to make sure we're hitting on all cylinders with developers as we talk with them.
Well, knowing imminently you are going to Philadelphia, my thought was that's a quick overlay of one thing. And then as you proceed further into May and beyond, that will continue to grow and develop. But knowing you're back there and looking at this, I'm thinking, wow, the access. I mean, that's going to happen relatively soon, at least the beginning of it. And just as you go to the urban developers, that they know that that's happening, and then the future ones as well. But that's time out down the line. Great report. We thank you very, very much. And I guess don't need anything other than Bravo, and we can't wait. From fear mouth to God's ears, let's hope we get tons of developers coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, now we move on to Agenda Item 58. For Possible Action, City of Las Vegas Advisory Committee, the Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, Sam Cherry, term expiration 11/2/2016, but I understand he has already resigned from this. The proposed background, the CAC consists of nine members appointed by the City Council. Members must work and/or live in or near the RDA area. They must represent small business owners, real estate development, homeowners, renters, condo owners, educators, along with a community member from each of the three wards within the redevelopment area. Terms for these boards are three years, and members are limited to two full and consecutive terms. Mr. Cherry served in category E seat, which must be an apartment renter or condominium owner residing in the redevelopment area. A new category E appointment must be named. And I understand, Councilman Barlow, you have someone you wish to recommend to fill this vacancy?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you so very much. As I looked around to a number of people who had interest in serving on this board, Ms. Asha Jones, who is the aide to Senator Harry Reid, not only lives in the Ogden, but is very much familiar with the expansion and the redevelopment of not just the downtown community, but Southern Nevada as a whole in her role as aide to Senator Reid. And so for that, I would ask that we appoint Ms. Asha Jones to serve the unexpired term of Mr. Sam Cherry, as she's interested and very elated to serve in this capacity, to work in the downtown on redevelopment areas.
And she does fit all the requirements of either renting or...
She owns a condo here in the downtown.
In the RDA area?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Okay, so that's your motion?
That would be my motion.
Thank you. There's motion, please vote, and please post. And Councilwoman stepped out. So that motion carries. I'm sure you will be in touch, Ms. Holmes, to let her know? Okay. And Agenda Item 59 has been abayed to April 6. Move on to Agenda Item 60. Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill Number 2016-13. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Please do so.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill 2016-13, An Ordinance to Extend the Boundaries of the City, to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve, Bill Number 2016-13. Please vote, please post. And we'll move on. That carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 61, Bill 2016-14. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Please.
Thank you. Bill 2016-14, An Ordinance to Extend the Boundaries of the City, to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve, Agenda Item 61. Please vote, please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 62, Bill Number 2016-15. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill Number 2016-50, An Ordinance to Extend the Boundaries of the City, to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 62. Please vote and please post. Motion carries on Agenda Item 63, Bill Number 2016-19. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Bill Number 2016-19, An Ordinance of the City Council, City of Las Vegas, Nevada, authorizing the issuance of its City of Las Vegas, Nevada General Obligation Limited Tax Performing Arts Center Refunding Bonds, additionally secured by Pledge of Revenue Series 2016A, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds and the security therefore, and other details in connection therewith, providing other matters relating thereto, and providing the effective date hereof.
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 63.
Could I ask for clarification from staff?
Yes, please. Staff, would you come forward, please? Okay, Councilman Beers?
I think I've grown to conclude that we borrowed too much money and put it into Symphony Park, convinced that the world would quickly beat a path to our door, which it has not. And so we've been saddled with interest that has required us to reduce our general services. So I wanted to make sure that this is not a borrowing of new money, if we could have an explanation of why we're borrowing this money.
Veneta Alpear, Director of Finance, these bonds are definitely just refunding the existing debt.
That means we're borrowing at a lower cost of interest?
Yes, we are.
And thus, we'll be saving money?
We will be saving money. We'll be saving about $19 million over the remaining life of the bonds, which equates to about a 20.4% net present value savings, which is well above our 3% requirement in the debt management policy.
Does this extend our obligations?
It does not. It is the same life as the original bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. For those who haven't voted, please do so, and then we'll please post. Councilman Coffin?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 64, Bill 2016-20. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Bill Number 2016-20, An Ordinance of the City Council, City of Las Vegas, Nevada, authorizing the issuance of its City of Las Vegas, Nevada General Obligation Limited Tax Various Purpose Refunding Bonds, additionally secured by Pledge of Revenue Series 2016B, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds and the security therefore, and other details in connection therewith, providing other matters relating thereto, and providing the effective date hereof.
Questions?
Yes, if I could get...
Yes, please. Come back, Ms. Alpear.
Veneta, again.
Probably stay up there.
And if I could make a recommendation, Mayor?
You might want to stay, because we got one more.
The South Weir report on the next one coming as well. That way I might save some time.
What's the difference between the last one and this one?
This one is, the previous one was, the pledged revenues were the car rental tax. In this bond, the pledged revenues are consolidated tax. So that's why they have to be done in two different tranches.
And the duration of the new bonds?
The bonds were originally issued in 2006. This just, this requires the bonds to be over the remaining life of the original issue. So it will be ended in 2000, sorry, 2036. So it's over the remaining life. It is going to provide $11 million in cash savings over the remaining life, which is a 24.3% net present value to the city.
Thank you.
Okay. No, we'll get that when we get there. Just hold one sec, please. Please vote, please post. Motion carries now. Agenda Item 65, Bill Number 2016-21. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read? And please so, Mr. Steed.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, please, if you'll read it, and then we'll have her comment.
Thank you. Bill Number 2016-21, An Ordinance of the City Council, City of Las Vegas, Nevada, providing for the issuance of its General Obligation Limited Tax Sewer Refunding Bonds, additionally secured by Pledge of Revenue Series 2016, for the purpose of refunding certain of the city's outstanding sewer bonds, providing the form, terms, and conditions thereof, and the security therefore, and other details in connection therewith, providing other matters relating thereto, and providing the effective date hereof.
Veneta Alpear, Director of Finance, these bonds are, again, for sewer refunding bonds. So they're paid for by the sewer fees that we collect on our sanitation system. They were originally issued in 2006. They were 15-year bonds with a maturity of 2021. With this, we are refunding the bonds through the period of 2021 over the remaining life. It'll provide a $2 million net cash value savings, which is a 10.7% net present value to the city.
Okay, thank you very much. Could we have a motion?
Move for approval.
And we have a question. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious. I know that there's a commission paid and brokerage fees and all that. How much is earned by the representatives of the city and Wall Street in general when you get down to churning these things? There's a purpose. There's a savings, and we endorse that. But I'm just curious, how much is made by the folks that do this for us?
You're talking about the actual consultants that are helping us on that, on this, or just in general? This has a total indicated cost of about 3% for all of these refinancings. So about 3% of all of this?
Is that 3% of the face value?
3% of the bonds issued.
Okay. And is that, that's all encompassing, including the fees paid to the brokers, the exchanges, or whatever else listing there might be done?
Yes.
3%?
About 3%.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. There was a motion. There we go. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Alpear. Appreciate it. Agenda Item 66, Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption Later Meeting. Bill Items Number 66 through 68, Bill Number 2016-16 through 2016-18 will be heard later meeting. We will move on to new bills. This is Agenda Item 69, New Bills. Item 69 and 70, Bills Number 2016-22 and 2016-23 will be heard at Recommending Committee Meeting on Monday, April 4, 2016. Would you please read the new bills?
Thank you. Bill Number 2016-22, An Ordinance to Extend the Boundaries of the City, particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. And Bill Number 2016-23, An Ordinance to Amend LVMC Title 6.90, clarifying the licensing requirements and cost of licensure for farmers, markets, promoters, and vendors, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. These new bills, 2016-22 and 2016-23, are assigned to Council Members Anthony Ross, and I guess I am appearing since Councilman Barlow will be out of town. Okay, thank you. This morning's session is now in recess, and we will begin sharply at 1:00. Thank you very much.
Young man learning about government right there.
Pardon?
We begin peacefully.
We'll begin peacefully at 1:00. Peacefully. I like that. And you are pointing, you see something. And what does he want to do?
Young man, you want to come up to the microphone for a minute? Sure you do. He's in trouble now, Mayor.
Okay. Is he coming to learn about government, and that's why he's here?
With your permission, can they introduce themselves, Mayor?
Certainly. You have to turn the mic. Is it on?
Yeah.
Griffin Young.
How are you?
This is my 11-year-old boy, Griffin Young. He's on a kind of a field trip of both the courthouse and City Hall for one of his school projects.
And where do you go to school?
Leadership Academy.
And what grade are you in?
Uh, no. Six.
Sixth grade.
Wow. Smart times.
Yeah.
So have you learned a lot so far? Good. I'm sure Mayor Pro Tem would love to come down and answer any questions.
I'd be delighted to, Mayor.
Fine. Would you please go down and answer any private questions that he might have?
Appreciate it.
Oh, and we're going to sign for him? And if there's a good luck mayor chip, I don't Okay, everyone, we are reconvened after a nice little respite there. Who do I see walking away? Are we four? Here we are, ready to go ahead. So Agenda Item, we are on Agenda Item 71? Okay. For Possible Action, any items from the Afternoon Section that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. And so, councilmen, if you would, Mayor Pro Tem, let's have it.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Tarkanian has requested that Agenda Item 73, RQR 62203...
eight six, and TMP six two seven eight seven, you're covered, and I think you can move forward.
Okay. If that's your legal opinion, I don't think, is anybody else a lawyer on this, Councilman?
Yeah, well, Mayor, if you'd like to read, if you'd like to read them in, please, please go right ahead.
And no, I just said I have a sore throat, and if anybody was going to be reading, it was going to be Mayor Pro Tem.
I will.
And to be safe, but I--
We're completely, we're completely safe.
Fine. We heard that?
That's my motion.
We believe you. You're our attorney. You're in big trouble if you're wrong.
Won't be the first time, there.
[laughing] Okay, so your motion, again, please, sorry.
Your honor?
I hear you. Yes, please.
I just wanted to add, I think that's why Mr. Lewis is seated next to me this afternoon. He's already in big trouble.
Okay, all right. Mayor Pro Tem, you did all of that, including one oh six, correct?
I did, including one oh six, and that's a motion.
Okay, everyone, please vote. And please post. Councilman Beers, there you go. Okay, it was unanimous.
I too scared of what you should have heard.
Okay, so that leaves us, we now start agenda item seventy-two. And public hearing on proposed local improvement district for special improvement district number one five two one, Gowan Road and Durango Road. This is in Ward Four with Councilman Anthony. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is Ms. Osh, or Mr. Pavelka here?
Yes, we're present.
How are you? Hello? Okay, would you go ahead and make sure, just even though I announced you, please say your full name for the record.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Alan Pavelka, City Engineer for the City of Las Vegas Department of Public Works, and I have with me Alicia Ock. She's in our SID department, also in the Department of Public Works. So this is a public hearing for SID fifteen twenty-one for the improvements of two vacant parcels on Gowan Road and Durango Drive. And maybe if we could show on the overhead the location of those? There are the pink boxes there.
Can they, here we come. They're getting bigger for those whose eyesight is failing. Great, thank you.
Those parcels are both owned by the same property owner. The off-site improvements are completed in all directions surrounding this intersection of Gowan Road and Durango Drive, with the exception of those properties. We have an exhibit also showing the nearby schools, and I wanted to give you a flavor of what else is around the area. So we have three schools, all within a mile of the SID property. We also have a community center, and it's the safe route to school path for Malaski Schools, so it's, it's a safety issue, we feel. And then, so both Gowan Road and Durango Drive are used, and they're suggested for the walking and biking routes to and from school and to the community center. These locations are used by pedestrians who use the bus, and on that exhibit, the white triangles are all the bus stops in that area, and there are many. Citizens have complained that there is no sidewalk at these locations of the proposed SID, and it is not eighty-eight compliant, preventing them from reaching the nearest bus station. Proposed improvements on both sides of Gowan include a six-foot asphalt pavement for bike lanes, L-type curb and gutter, concrete sidewalk, and streetlights. The proposed improvements along Durango is a concrete sidewalk on the east side. The frontage is four hundred and eighty-five feet for each parcel, for a total of nine hundred and seventy feet. We are proposing a twenty-year assessment on a semi-annual payment basis. For both parcels, the total SID project cost is a hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. We've got additional funding through RTC, and that's a little over fifty percent. It's a hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety cents, for a total of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and forty cents. There were no written protests filed. However, Mr. and Mrs. White, the property owners, have met with city staff and expressed their protest to the SID. Just to kind of go through the process, there's four additional meetings before this is finalized. There's, first would be the resolution disposing of protests, that'll be at the council. The second one's the ordinance of creating the district. Then it goes to the recommend, recommending committee. And in May, the fourth and final would be the adoption of ordinance creating the district. Is there any questions?
This, if I may, on these tan lines, what you're talking about where the buses stop, those are public buses, or school buses, or both?
They're RTC.
It's RTC bus, bus stops, yeah.
You are talking about any, all of that area that's on those tan lines being concrete or some type of sidewalk in addition to having its bike paths or whatever ancillary, those? Because otherwise, there's absolute, I would imagine, liability exposure, somebody getting off a bus and steps on a rock, they'll break an ankle?
Correct.
So this is boat, this is on those streets, the, just the sides where the buses stop, or both sides?
Just, just the parcel is, the, the blue box here is the parcels that are in subject that is SID. The orange is the school route, the safe bicycling involved.
And again, your name, please, if you would--
I'm Alicia Ock with Public Works.
Thank you. Okay, so the, the whole tan orange, the whole tan orange, as you're calling it, lines, you are not talking about putting in sidewalks along those lines all the way? You just want the SID on those two parcels?
Yes, yes. The SID is just on the corner of the intersection of those two parcels. The orange line is just showing your safe walking routes and bicycling routes to and from the schools in the area.
So there is sidewalk in all locations, Mayor, except for the undeveloped parcels that we're talking about?
Okay, I get it.
And I do have a picture showing that, if we could put that up?
Well, so that's just, um--
Okay.
This is Gowan Road, looking, looking west towards the community center that's on the corner here.
Mm-hmm.
So you can see there's, there's no sidewalks or pass for pedestrians to walk through. And then here, my, you have the end of the sidewalk from adjacent improvements. So, and this is where the improvements just don't continue on those two parcels.
And this SID is, I heard the money amount, but the neighborhood, or the people that own the properties are paying for it?
It's, it's the people that own those two parcels.
And are willing to do that?
They are, they have met with us and are protesting it, and they're here today.
Okay. Okay, any questions from anybody else?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes, and then back to you, Councilman Anthony. Yes, Councilwoman?
I just want to clarify, the other residents who had property have already paid for their sidewalks, right? And that's why we're doing this with an SID, or else the commercial development of the place paid for it.
Correct, Councilwoman, yes.
And this is where the gap is, and it would be the responsibility of the owner of the property.
Correct.
Yeah, that's--
Okay, thank you. I'm glad for the clarification. Councilman Coffin, you had a question?
Just a question. When the curb and gutter were put in, I don't think they're in the previous picture, why wasn't sidewalk put in then? You know, I represent a mature area in town, so, you know, these things are designed or by accident on the east side, but in the west side, so much is planned. I'm, I'm used to everything having been subject to a plan, which usually included those amenities. How did that happen?
You're right, Councilman. I don't have the answer for that one. Let me research when that project went in and why it was set up that way.
All right. I don't want to hold anything up.
Thank you. And I do, is there anything else from Mr. Lowenstein, or from Mr. Verigo here, on this? It is a public hearing, and so anybody who wishes to comment on this project, please come forward and state your name for the record. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to all of yous. I'm Alexander White. We own that property. I've had it forty-some years. I've paid, stayed in Nevada, over three hundred some thousand dollars taxes on it. I can't sell it because the zone is wrong. Nobody will buy it. I've had it for sale for a long time. Now they're wanting a hundred and forty some thousand dollars from me to put curbs and gutters on it, and I was protesting it.
Okay, thank you. And with you is--
Pardon me?
With you is this lovely lady.
I've known his wife for fifty-two years.
Ah, what, what month are you married?
January the eleventh.
His birthday, we got married on his birthday. He was thirty years old, and he was that glad he got me. He didn't know it was his birthday until he was from his old paper.
Don't you believe her.
No, no, wait. And your name is, please?
We're married in Las Vegas.
Esther.
Esther.
Esther. And so that was January of sixty-two, or whatever?
Four, sixty-four.
Sixty-four. Oh, we got you beat, thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Anyway, I'm gonna turn this over.
I met with all your people here. They're very nice people.
Aren't they?
They helped me in every way they could. But I just wanted to protest it anyway, see what happens, because I know I'm at your mercy, so--
Well, just stay married. You got the right lady. All right, Councilman Anthony, wait, I hear something down here.
I do have, I do have a question.
Before we turn it over to Councilman Anthony, everybody wants to talk again. They'd love that you're married so long. It's like Nancy Reagan and Ronald Reagan.
Yeah, I just seen it in the, in the book coming up here, when I went in to get some cokes for me and him to drink, Seven Up, at the grocery store, the whole thing about their marriage and their life. It was beautiful.
So, good for Coca-Cola and Seven Up. Okay, Councilman, go ahead.
This is more so for staff, if you all will come back just for a second.
You could have a seat, both of you, if you'd like. After being married so long, you deserve to sit down. I'll call you back up.
Thank you.
I can say that. I got two more years on them.
The question I have is, if you can just provide just a little bit of backdrop, why this is coming before us now? And two, what's the current zoning of the site? And then I just have one final follow-up question after those two. We, Councilman, we received a few emails from residents in that area, and I think what prompted it was RTC added a couple bus routes, and with that, people wanted to go to the bus, and then they filed or sent email complaints to the city asking for the sidewalk to be completed.
Oh.
And it is zoned--
Medium residential.
It's zoned medium residential. Okay, so it's contiguous with the surrounding neighborhood? Yes, sir. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just to be crystal clear on the, it's, the land use is medium low, and it allows eight point four nine units per acre.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. I guess if you could put the map up again to show us the property, is, there's a mirror image of another vacant piece on the opposite side of the street, on the opposite side of Gowan. Is it same owner, same--
Yes, Councilman. So both those parcels reach two and a half acres, and they're owned by Mr. and Mrs.--
Is the zoning that they apparently cannot get something to do with upzoning, maybe to go away from residential?
Yes. They, they would like to go commercial.
Is there some sort of a limited commercial? I mean, because I'm thinking, that's a section line road. I don't know why--
He's talking about limited commercial.
I'm just curious why, in fact, that would be expected at section line roads like that, that you would have some sort of use as well as residential. It looks like a lot of different levels of residential. We have a sewer plant, a corner there, next to Durango Hills Community Center. So sometimes I can understand if a person's not going to get any benefit out of it, other than the fact that someday, if they put houses, they'll lose money. So, you know, this is going to cost a lot of money with no direct incentive to do it, or perhaps we could have forced it on them sooner if they had come in with a request. Now they're going to pay, and they're not going to get any benefit out of it, other than the fact that they're good citizens.
We, Councilman, we have advised them to talk to the planning department and look at a rezone, change.
And your honor, if I might, the property was annexed in two thousand and two, and we haven't received any requests to change the zoning on it. So it's, it, the zoning on it right now is sort of, it's called U. It's kind of a holding pattern. The land use, based on the master plan that was adopted by council, set that density at eight point four nine units per acre, which is entirely consistent with all of the residential development in that area. And so that's the status of it now, but we have not received any applications to change zoning.
I see. Okay, because I was led to believe, and I think that the protester is going to ask to speak on that, if, if, Mayor, we could just have an explanation?
Yes.
I don't want to belabor this, because he said he hasn't been able to get zoning, in a sense, so I'm not quite sure what he has asked for, or if it's just been casual inquiries.
Yes, sir.
We came in several times to change the zone, and when Brown was in, and it was a no deal, he wouldn't change nothing. We, several times, went to the office to speak to Brown when he was in, and he was a no-no.
And have you, have you been in to speak with the councilman?
I just spoke to the gentleman today, this guy, and he's--
Councilman Anthony?
Yes.
Stavros?
Yes. Talked to him, and his associate, they were very nice, and I'm going to try and get the zoning changed. But as far as trying to change the zoning, yes. When Brown was in, there were no way he was changing the zoning.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, your honor, if I could just ask, what was it you were seeking at that time?
Pardon me?
What zoning were you seeking at that time?
Commercial.
Well, there's different levels of commercial.
We just wanted something like, maybe you could put, we'll say what--
You've got to speak to the microphone.
Okay. Like to put on, like, little office buildings, or something like that, you know what I mean? But they wouldn't change the zoning.
Multiple stories would probably not be favorably looked upon by anybody. You know, obviously, that'd be low-key. Thank you very much. It's not my ward--
Thank you, sir.
And, but I'm curious, because it's, it's a part of town I'm not familiar with.
That is what happened. There were no way Brown was going to change nothing.
Okay, well, we have that on your commentary. I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Anthony, except I see Mrs. is here, yes?
I was just gonna--
Put a two cent with it.
Since Ronnie's up, I figured I can come up. What I was going to say was, they, they suggested downtown, not, not Governor Brown, or whatever, but they did say--
It could be Governor.
That you could have a two-story--
We have a sewer plant, a corner there, next to Durango Hills Community Center. So, sometimes I can understand if a person's not going to get any benefit out of it, other than the fact that someday, if they put houses, they'll lose money. So, you know, this is going to cost a lot of money with no direct incentive to do it, or perhaps we could have forced it on them sooner if they had come in with a request. Now they're going to pay, and they're not going to get any benefit out of it, other than the fact that they're good citizens.
We, Councilman, we have advised them to talk to the planning department and look at a rezone change.
And Your Honor, if I might, the property was annexed in 2002, and we haven't received any requests to change the zoning on it, so it's, it, the zoning on it right now is sort of, it's called U, it's kind of a holding pattern. The land use, based on the master plan that was adopted by council, set that density at eight-point-four-nine units per acre, which is entirely consistent with all of the residential development in that area. And so that's the status of it now, but we have not received any applications to change zoning.
I see, okay, because I was led to believe, and I think that the protester is going to ask to speak on that, if, Mayor, we could just have an explanation?
Yes.
I don't want to belabor this, because he said he hasn't been able to get zoning, in a sense, so I'm not quite sure what he has asked for, or if it's just been casual inquiries.
Yes, sir.
We came in several times to change the zone, and when Brown was in, and it was a no-deal, he wouldn't change nothing. We, several times, went to the office to speak to Brown when he was in, and he was a no-no.
And have you, have you been in to speak with the Councilman?
I just spoke to the gentleman today, this guy, and he's...
Councilman Anthony?
Yes.
Stavros?
Yes.
Okay.
Talked to him, and his associate, they were very nice, and I'm going to try and get the zoning changed. But as far as trying to change the zoning, yes, when Brown was in, there were no way he was changing the zoning.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, Your Honor, if I could just ask, what was it you were seeking at that time?
Pardon me?
What zoning were you seeking at that time? Well, there's different levels of commercial.
We just wanted something like, maybe you could put, uh, we'll say what?
You've got to speak to the microphone.
Like to put on, like, little office buildings, or something like that, you know what I mean, but they wouldn't change the zoning.
Multiple stories would probably not be favorably looked upon by anybody. You know, obviously, that'd be low-key. Thank you very much, it's not my ward...
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, but I'm curious, because it's a part of town I'm not familiar with.
That is what happened. There were no way Brown was going to change nothing.
Okay, well, we have that on your commentary. I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Anthony, except I see Mrs. is here, yes?
Yes, I was just gonna...
Put a two cent with it.
Ma'am?
Since Ronnie's up, I figured I can come up. What I was going to say was, they suggested downtown, not, not Governor Brown or whatever, but they did say that you could have a two-story would be ideal. Three stories may interfere with the people behind, not being able to see the mountains and the snow and all that, when certain times of the year changes. But they said two stories, and what would be ideal there, and our aspect, now this is what they told me, this was years ago, would be two-story, like, medical orthodontist, dentist, any type of medical building there, or even a convalescent center, that's what they told me. So that's all I can tell you is what they said.
Thank you.
And it was originally five acres, but they put the road through it and split it and made it two, a little, it's about two acres, exactly, on each side now.
Right, interesting, very interesting.
So that's a story on that. And we are good citizens.
All right, so now we're going to hear Councilman, this is not the former Councilman for Ward Two, but this is Councilman Anthony, who's now Ward Four, and going to make this happen somewhere.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, Mr. and Mrs. White, it was nice meeting you today, so, just to stay right there, I want you to completely understand what's going on here. So, as far as the SID, I requested our staff go ahead and go through the process of approving an SID, whether the city council approves it or not is down the road, but today's the public hearing, so you came down and protested, that's, uh, that was your right to do that. There's three more things that have to happen, there's another hearing, and then it goes in front of one of our committees for discussion, and then it finally comes to the city council for approval for the SID. So, make sure, could you make sure they, they know the dates when that, those things come up, so they can follow what's going on? And that'll take about another sixty to ninety days for a final discussion by the Las Vegas, by us up here, once it's gone to recommending in this final hearing. So that's, that's going to move forward, and we'll see how the vote shakes out. But the reason I requested it is because of the issues that you all brought up, as far as the schools and those sorts of things. And, and understand, the interesting thing about this SID is normally the, uh, the property owners would pay for the whole thing, which is about $240,000. We've actually, they've actually acquired over half of it from tax funds from the Regional Transportation Commission to pay for over half of it. So you're paying for less than half of it in the first place, so, just so you understand that. So that's going to move forward. Now, the second part is this zoning thing. You've never requested it to be rezoned, you've talked to a former councilman, but you've never actually put in a formal request to rezone it. I, I've never received a formal request to rezone it. So if you want to do that, if you want to go through the process of formally requesting a rezoning, you can do that, and then that'll go through another process of public hearings and residents weighing in on it and getting more information, and we are, we may or may not vote on that also. So, you can do that if you want, but if you don't formally request a rezoning, it's never going to happen, and even if you do request it, it may never happen either, depending on what, what happens. So, just understand that part, okay? I'm not telling you not to put an application, I never tell anyone not to put an application in for anything, because there's a process that you have the right to go through. Whether you get that request approved or not is a different story, but you can do that if you want. So, I just want you to understand exactly what's happening today.
Oh, you're okay?
So, give me a yay or a nay.
Well, yeah, no, I'll agree with you, but, on the other hand, what you said, it's still a lot of money, a hundred-and-forty-some-thousand dollars. I don't think none of you councils would want to come up with that either.
That is, that is correct, that is a lot of money.
Okay, so I'm just saying, number two, we did go in several times, I sent people in to Brown, and he would tell them, they're no sense, I'm not changing the zoning. Several times, I sent people in there, and we got no results.
Well, I'm not going to speak for Commissioner Brown, I don't know what happened, but my, my stance has always been, if you want to request something, you request it, and the process will, will determine whether it's going to be approved or not. So that, that's your right to do that.
We will, we'll do that, thank you.
So, so you, you guys understand what's going on today?
Yes.
Okay, very good, I appreciate it, and if you want to attend the other hearings that are coming up, you're welcome to attend the recommending committee, you're welcome to attend the final city council meeting and make a comment on there, and we'll just kind of see how things go.
All right.
And before you make a motion, if I might...
Well, there's, there's no motion, this is just a public hearing.
Okay, because it did say on here that, did you want to make a motion, so if it's public hearing?
It does, yeah.
Yeah. What I wanted to ask was, and really, through you and, and Mr. Sarantes, is, this is the most unusual situation. I mean, obviously, as I mentioned earlier on, there's a, there's an exposure, an openness, somebody walks off the sidewalk, breaks an ankle, it's your property, I think, and therefore, do you have an exposure there? I don't know, I have to ask the lawyer that, but obviously, because this is now being heard, and there's a notice that this needs to take place. Have we ever had a situation that's similar, where somebody buys a piece of property, it's divided in half, it's lost its value, and now these people who've owned the property for forty years are being encumbered with an assessment for something that they neither can move? I mean, have we, do we have any history of something, and can we help in any other way? And as a joke, I said to Councilman Beers, since Ms. Apple Yard saved us all that money, can't we use a little bit of that money to fix this problem? I'm being facetious there, but really, Mr. Sarantes?
Mayor, for the record, this is what I said about this. There have been similar cases in the past, whenever we do roadway improvement projects all along Durango, all in Buffalo, most of the northwest, there's parcels that are similar to this. Those parcels are assessed for the improvements that are further property. As Mr. Pabeca indicated, more than half of the money's coming from public money, RTC money. The difference is, RTC won't pay for the sidewalk improvements, and that's why it's the responsibility of property, and you have to finance that. RTC pays for the roadway component, but not the, the sidewalk component. And that, as was mentioned earlier, if you look at all the other developments, the way sidewalks are constructed in our city and our valley, it's the responsibility of property, or either as a master developer, when they do a subdivision, or an individual property owner, as they develop their parcel. So it, it is a normal, normal course of business that we do it this way, that the parcel owner is assessed for the cost of that improvement.
And so, to take that a step further, people who bought property in an un, in a non-assessed, open area forty years ago, have the same liability for assessment as this piece does?
Yes, ma'am, as we did most of the northwest, and that was done through a combination of RTC and SID funds, that's the way they were assessed, the same way.
And at that point, was it notified to all the landowners that your property could be assessed, further development for whatever?
As we did those projects adjacent to those parcels, they were notified, there were public hearings, we had similar protests come up since some of those hearings. The law does allow, if the majority of the area around it is improved, then a public agency does have the right to force the, the SID.
And then considering what Councilman Anthony was suggesting, it is, and they could have the opportunity to go ahead and file for a change of...
A change of zoning.
Change of zoning. And that, you can't think of anything else they could be doing to avoid having to spend a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars?
Uh, there is a provision where the, there is a hardship situation, where the county does provide assistance on some hardship, if they don't have the ability to pay, our SID folks can share that information, but there is some money that the county provides for hardship situations.
And there are properties in the city limits?
It, it's, it's valley-wide, it's not, it's not only in the county.
Okay. Anything else you wish to add? Did you?
Oh, Mayor, I, what I would just say is, he talked about coming with a rezoning and development plan. In that case, he would be required to put in the half-street and the sidewalk, so he, in fact, would be paying for that when he came in to develop that property. Just, just FYI.
Yes, are you going to give us the money from the bonds?
I don't know the answer to the question that I'm about to ask, which makes me hesitant to ask it. But if you had these two, I mean, when we, if we ran a street up between the property, we paid them fair value for the land we took at the time. So now there's two parcels on this corner, if, if they put $300,000 of sidewalk improvements in, won't that increase the value of the real estate by $300,000?
Mayor, if you'll hold this up, that's for the record, actually, the law requires that we can't assess more than the added value to the property, and that's part of the reason why, part of it's being publicly funded, and part of it's assessed to the property. So the value added has to equate to what they paid or, or more. And so, it does add value to that property, because the next person that finally develops it won't have that expenditure.
Further question, ma'am?
Yes.
Just positing certain things, what if, okay, this is for the general public welfare, requiring this couple to pave the dirt there. It's not for his benefit, he's not going to get any leverage out of this, because he's not asking for anything. So there's no realized profit, and of course, we've already reduced the value of the property in a sense by cutting it in half, and many people like that, because you could put a gas station or a C-store and that kind of case, but it sounds like there's opposition to that, so, um, what if he installed the, we're talking about a public works project, which is going to cost a lot more than if Esther and Mr. White, is it, did it themselves? We allow that to happen, so they can do it a lot cheaper than we could? There any reason why we couldn't? Subject to our specs, just like a developer would do it?
Councilman, yes, we can, I mean, if they're willing to put it in, and we did have that discussion about them putting it in.
Yeah, how much would more would it cost if they did it, if we do it versus if they did it?
Well, I wouldn't think it'd be much more, because we, we go out to bid with our contractors, so I would think it would be very similar. And the other thing is, they would have to hire an engineer to do the plans, which we, we do in-house, so...
All right, thank you.
Okay, so it's back to you, Councilman Anthony. There is no motion then, okay? All right, it's just a public hearing, so certainly be in touch with Councilman Anthony and...
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you all, very much, for listening.
Thank you both. We'll move on to... Okay, Agenda Item Seventy-Three has been abayed to the eighteenth of May. Agenda Item Seventy-Four, and I'm going to have you read it if you can, because I'm about to cough again.
You bet, Mayor, thank you. This is Agenda Item Seventy-Four, VAR six-two-three-three-seven, on request for variance to allow zero additional parking spaces, where two additional spaces are required on zero-point-two-one acres at four-zero-three-three West Sahara Avenue. Agenda Item Seventy-Five is SUP six-two-three-four-zero, on a request for a special use permit for a proposed one-thousand-thirty-two-square-foot massage establishment with waiver to allow a distance separation of twenty feet from residential use, where four-hundred feet is required. The applicant is John Geach and Zee Lee, and the owner is Robarts Nineteen Eighty-One Trust at four-zero-three-three West Sahara Avenue, C-one Limited Commercial Zone. Staff recommends denial, and the planning commission recommends approval on both items. These are in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian, and our public, our public hearings, which I now declare open, is the applicant present?
Yes, sir, I am, I am John Geach.
Thank you, Mr. Perrigo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The change in use requires two additional parking spaces, which cannot be provided, and therefore, there's a need for the variance. In additional, in addition, the special use permit requires a waiver from the distance separation to single-family residential. It's required four-hundred-foot distance separation, which cannot be accommodated, so therefore, staff is recommending denial.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on these items from the public, as it is a public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Tarkanian?
First of all, I think this council knows I'm not the greatest proponent of massage establishments. However, number one, as far as the parking's concerned, I've never been by there, and I've been by there hundreds and hundreds of times, and never seen it half-full, that parking lot, so I'm not so concerned with that. Secondly, even though I could use the distance as a reason to vote it down, nonetheless, we have in the past, where there's been a boundary that is, restricts movement, we have gone and approved a variance on these distances. And in this situation, there is a, an alley between the building and the residences, and in addition to that, there is a wall that the residences have put up around all of them, so unless you're good at climbing high, it'd be very difficult to be able to move there. I had some concerns about where your wife previously worked. We checked it out, but I want you to know that some of those complaints went to the state, so it wasn't, I'm counting it wasn't you, there's nothing to show it is, and in fairness, I'm, and I would like to have a really strong watch over this and a review in a year, a strong review. I will move to approve, which I'm shocked that I'm doing, but I'm trying to be very fair.
Thank you very much, and...
One last thing, Mayor, also, you went to the community, I asked you to go to the, and we received no complaints, and you spoke with the head of the Neighborhood Association, and they were fine with it. Please, please, make that look as nice as you can, even if the others around you don't, because we're working very hard with our RDA to build that up. Thank you.
It will be beautiful. And I talked to the landlord about the VIP program you mentioned to me, and they are looking into that for the whole complex, so that, everything's being worked on.
That's good. So, I would then move to follow the recommendation of the planning commission and approve.
Agenda Item Seventy-Four?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion to approve on Agenda Item Seventy-Four. Please vote and please post.
And that's including the one-year review, is there anything else I should say?
Thank you, through, Your Honor, planning commission did place a one-year required administrative review on the, as a condition of approval of the special use permit, and so that is there, and I think that satisfies the councilwoman's requirement.
Right, I'm following their recommendation.
Okay, and on that, so you have to vote?
Yes, we need to vote.
And please post, that carries. And on Agenda Item Number Seventy-Five?
Due to the fact that there's certainly no overcrowding in that parking lot, I move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion on Agenda Item Seventy-Five. Please vote, and please post.
And we're trusting you in this, so I hope to see a great business.
It will be beautiful. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you for coming down, thank you, Councilwoman. Agenda Item Seventy-Six, MOD six-two-six-seven-nine, public hearing. Applicant owner ninety-five Management LLC for possible action or request for a major modification of the Kyle Canyon Development Standards to amend the Blended Land Use Design Guidelines, TD, Traditional Development Zoning. Ward Six with Councilman Ross. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, this is public hearing, I declare open, is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council, my name is Bob Groenhauer, Nineteen Eighty Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the Sky Canyon Master Plan Community. We are here asking you to follow the great staff report that your staff put together, recommending approval, and your planning commission has also recommended approval of the changes that we're proposing, so I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Questions? This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please come forward to state your name. Hearing and seeing no one, I will then close the public hearing, and Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor, I would move to follow planning staff and planning commission's recommendation for approval, and good luck, Mr. Groenhauer, thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion, please vote and please post unanimously.
Thank you, and hopefully, we get to see all of you tonight at the grand opening of the community center, so we're proud of that, and we're ready to go.
How's the weather out there?
It's beautiful.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow?
Yeah, well, we have Mr. Groenhauer there, I think, being that he's representing my item, we can probably just take that up, since he's here.
Okay, our next item, one oh-one has been abayed to the twentieth of April. Excuse me. And we're into one oh-four and one oh-five as we go through, correct? Well, no, one oh-two. Have to pack up. Is that all right? Do we do one oh-two and three?
Well, I thought since he was standing there, so he can go. I'm not sure how he knows.
Your honor, I'm on 102 and 103, and I'm more than happy to cede my position to Ward 5.
How nice.
I'm going to take his item first.
Most generous.
Thank you. I was just trying to save Mr. Gronhauer time so he didn't have to sit through, since he was already standing there.
Thank you, councilman. I appreciate that.
Okay, so agenda item, I wonder why these are all stapled together? There we go. Okay. Agenda item 104, S U P 62791, a request for a special use permit for a proposed 5,532 square foot car wash, full-service or auto detailing use at 6351 West Lake Mead Boulevard. And agenda item 105, S D R 62792, on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 5,532 square foot car wash, full-service or auto detailing use on 1.47 acres at 6351 West Lake Mead Boulevard. The applicant owner is Miller Harvey M. Family Trust, C1 Limited Commercial Zone. The planning commission and staff recommend approval on both items. These are on Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow, and are public hearings which I declare open. Would you care to comment on who you are first? Again?
Again, good afternoon, your honor, members of the council. My name is Bob Gronhauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant and property owner in this matter. This is a special use permit for a car wash on an infill piece of property. As a matter of fact, I actually represented the same application back in 2005 for the same company at that point in time, but at that time, they also were coming in with a maintenance facility. Today, we're just coming in with the car wash itself. We exceed your code requirements with buffering and landscaping, and we're excited to hopefully open within the next couple of years. And I have a rendering here to give you an idea of the building itself that they're proposing. So with that being said, your staff is recommending approval of this use permit and site development plan review, and the planning commission has unanimously recommended approval.
That's right. The prettiest car wash in town. Wow. Okay, Mr. Perrigo.
Thank you, your honor. The staff finds the development complies with all setback and landscape requirements and is recommending approval of wow.
Wow. It is wow. I mean, I didn't even see the wow when I said wow, or I did subconsciously. All right, it's public hearing. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item? Hearing is, whoops. Please come forward and state your names for the record.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of my mother, is Malita Penna. She is...
Your name, please.
My name is Aiden Lee. I'm sorry.
Okay, Aiden Lee.
She is...
And your mother's name?
Is Malita Penna.
Okay.
Okay. Her house is adjacent to where the car wash is going to be, and the only thing she does request is they have maybe a higher wall, so, because is it...
Can we have the drawing back again? Do you have the property? And would you point to your mother's house?
Let me show you. So I guess somewhere back here?
Yes. It would be right, right, right there.
It would be right?
The address is 6340 Blue Twilight Court, so it's right adjacent to where the car wash would be.
Okay, and what is the, what is the developer's plan on that wall?
Yeah, two things. One is, we were planning to keep the wall as is, but if we have their permission to raise the wall on their property, we're more than willing to do so as long as engineering, for engineering purposes, we can do so with the city's approval. Or the other thing that we've done, that we've already worked with staff, is we've increased the landscaping in this area, because we've widened it and made sure we increased landscaping in that area for the buffering itself. So I don't know if we can add to the wall, but if it's engineering, from an engineering standpoint, if it's able to and we can get their permission, we do not have a problem in doing that.
Because sometimes that is true. The rebar isn't strong enough to hold up the wall, and you can't add to the height. But I'm going to turn this back to Councilman Barlow to talk through this, and anything, we will have more comments from public, but Mr. Perrigo, on the off chance that they can go higher, the wall? Well, how high is the wall there anyway?
It should be six feet. Oh, it's eight on that side?
Well, it can go up to eight, but I don't know what the height is. I don't...
Yeah, because the picture looked like it was high in a certain part but low in another part. You have another picture there?
Yeah, I think if staff, if the person who controls the overhead, I think they may have the picture of your staff out there.
See the lower part there? There was higher? I don't look like it. Now, what do you see there, Mr. Perrigo?
And the wall, actually, is what I'm looking at, is it looks like there's a retaining wall with this, so it's higher than your typical six-foot wall, so you probably, on our side, it looks like it's probably up to nine feet, maybe eight feet, if that's where you can go, but it's not a six-foot wall on our side.
Okay. So is, are one of those homes yours?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll turn this to you, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, ma'am. So the first question I have is, are you in support of the car wash?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I just want to make sure that, understand where you are in regards to the development of the site. And in addition to that, the wall is currently an eight-foot-high wall, which is city standard. But what I can do is increase the buffering as far as the trees would have you, because I believe its security is what you're, is what you're seeking in regards to your property. And so, Mr. Gronhauer, I believe it'll probably be a conversation in regards to the landscape buffering that we need to talk about on that south side of the property?
Yes.
And so, if you could speak to that, do you have any renderings as it relates to your landscape?
I know staff asked us to add some additional landscaping in there, and I don't know if Mr. Perrigo has that condition, but what we can do is add more trees, I believe, on the rendering here. Her location would be up in this area here on the property.
Right.
And we're more than willing to sit down with staff, and even after the meeting here, I'll work with the ladies here to address the buffering up in this area with the trees, because I know we were already asked to increase it, and we can put more trees in there, bigger trees out there, which is probably your better buffering.
What I'll do is, I'll condition the trees as a, as a, as a condition, we're going to have the, traditionally, what type of trees would...
Madam Mayor, back at the beginning of February, there was a revision to the landscape plan that changed the trees to sweet acacia, so that there was year-round foliage that would mitigate any visual impacts on the site. Those revisions have been made, but if buffered...
And what about the separation of the trees on the, on the south side of the property line? The distance between 20 feet on center? 25 feet on center?
They look to be 20 feet on center.
20 feet on center?
Any closer, you start getting conflicts with the trees themselves.
Right. And so, and so, Mr. Gronhauer, what I'm going to do is, is just for this backside, because we do need more greenery in the area anyway, I'm going to condition just the south side of the property line to be the 20-foot-on-center, what size gallon?
Either 24-inch box or 15-gallon.
Okay.
Either or. I mean, if it's a 24-inch box, that will help get it a little bit quicker out there, that's fine. I get it, and we should make sure we buffer them with the landscaping, and that's probably the best way to address this issue here.
Yeah, I think so. And so, we'll go with the, what'd you say, 36? Yeah, because it's faster. So, I'm sorry?
The 15-gallons actually adapt quicker to the, their environment and will be growing at a stronger tree.
A 15-gallon?
15-gallon.
Isn't that pretty small?
They're fairly comparable to the 24-inch. They're just, it's just the gallon size at the root versus the box width that the tree sits in.
Right, that sounds pretty small. We'll go with, we'll go with the 24. We'll go with the 24-inch box, 20 on center, to help the family out. They're not opposing it, so we'll, we'll do that on the south side, on the south property line. I'll make that a part of the condition in my motion. And other than that, the development overall, Mayor and council, this is, this is a site that has gone dormant for a very long time, and having an opportunity to bring the development, this type of development into the area, something that, you know, that will bring an additional attraction to the area as well, and bring more activity to the adjacent retail shops. And so, my condition will be to have on the south property line, the 24-inch box, what type of tree?
Sweet acacia?
Sweet acacia, 20 feet on center on the south property line, and that will be my motion for, well, that's under the S D R, but this is the special use permit, so let's go with the special use permit first, and move for approval on S U P 62791, Mayor. That'd be my motion.
Okay. We have, we have someone else speaking here, and I haven't closed public hearing yet. And the other piece is, as you threw out that request or requirement, I want to make sure that wall's eight feet. I have, my wall is not eight feet, and that looks the same height as my wall at our house. So I'd just like somebody to measure it, and then if it's not, to certainly let councilmen know, and then you put that in if the wall can stand the extra blocks. If it's eight foot, it's eight feet. So we have another lady who's joined you. Do you, or do you know the lady next to you?
Yes. She's on my mother's neighbor. I don't live with my mother, but she's my mother's neighbor.
Okay, would you state your name, please, for the record, then?
I'm Yeyao.
Yeyao?
I'm sorry, I cannot speak, I do not speak English, but I want to see, I know great built it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I, I,代表one, two, three, four, five owner, I see. I, I...
Is this a relative of yours?
Hi.
Hello, you are?
That's her. Hi, my name's Jessie. I just represent my mom, and she actually said she represents five house owners of the, living in Blue Twilight Court, and they don't agree to build the car wash company or look, they don't agree with that.
Okay, so back to you, Councilman Barlow. You have some that are not available.
Yeah, I understand. She, your mom says that she's representing five or four other properties to include herself, and that they're in opposition to the car wash.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, let's find out...
The main reason, sorry, just one moment, please. The main reason she worry about is the air pollution there, and even though there might be some kind of landscaping, but, or small walls that will not prevent that happen. And also, the car, there will be many cars, so that will also be the sound pollution there. So this is what they worry about.
Oh, I get it. From the view...
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Where's your mother from?
Thank you.
From what country?
Right now, she's living here.
But what country is she born?
From China.
Beautiful. Thank you very much for coming down. We love our community. Anyone else wishing to be heard? I will now close the public hearing. Oh, yes, Councilman Coffin.
Well, it's, okay, close the public hearing.
I did close the public hearing.
And I'm going to support the motion, but I just wanted to say, and this helps me for edification, the clarification, the issue of noise pollution was on my mind, because the vacuum bays are there, and I wonder, how, how do you keep noise down on those? Is there a central vacuum within a building that then connects via pipe to the hoses so that noise is contained within a building? Or does each bay have its own vacuum?
Each, each bay will have its own wall to keep the sound within, within itself, within the bay area, and it's, it's not up adjacent to the wall itself, it's more in the middle and to the front of the road itself. So one of the things that we were, that we were sensitive in designing the building itself, is making sure with the technology that we have, that the cleaners, the sweepers, the vacuums itself are at a lower decibel level, along with not only just a decibel level, but you have the building block in it, and then we have your own booths that will be there, so to speak, where everything's self-contained.
So there is, and there's ambient noise coming from Lake Mead, too.
Yeah, yeah. And so, the ambient noise with Lake Mead is, it's just going to be a mixture of the two there.
Yeah, are there hours of operation that have been agreed upon?
Yeah, the hours of operation, it's, it's going to be, I believe, it was about 8:00 to 8:00, it's like sunrise to sunset in that area, basically.
Last question is, on the greenery that's chosen, and staff, this is something for you, too. When you pick, I know you're picking for visual appeal for the benefit of the neighbors. Do some green, do some species of greenery absorb sound better than others? So for example, you've got the spacing, you've got the type of foliage that a particular tree or bush has, and the spacing counts for a lot. What, are some better than others? You talked about acacia as one to use, and that's undoubtedly a nice-looking tree, but do some do a better job of absorbing sound?
Your honor, through you, I'm sure that the answer is yes. I don't know what species those would be, and they would be evergreen. We'd want those, obviously, to be, have foliage all year round, but I suppose different trees absorb sound differently, so yes.
I assume that's, I just hope that's taken into consideration when these sorts of things, this is not the first or the last car wash we're going to see, but it's like, we don't see very many in my ward, but I would think that I'd want to be able to choose something that would quiet noise down as much as possible. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor? Thank you, please, councilwoman.
I just wanted, because of what Councilman Barlow had said, that this is all going to be done inside the building, right?
Yeah, the wash, yeah, the wash is inside the building, yes.
Well, how about the vacuuming? Is it closed?
The vacuum is in between...
Vacuuming's outside?
Yeah, the vacuuming is outside, yes. It's, it's, it's away from the neighbors.
Okay, I just wondered, but you've done everything to keep the sound down?
Yes.
I just...
Yeah, and then actually, we also have a canopy on top also, so it's pretty much all self-contained. It's one of the issues that they're always sensitive, as they're in these type of situations on infill properties.
I just thought that perhaps they, I didn't know if they knew how carefully you had done that. Thank you.
Okay, councilman, back to you. Now your motion.
Yes, on the S U P, Mayor, 6.62791, I would move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Agenda item...
104.
104. There's a motion to approve. Please vote, subject to conditions, and please post. Motion carries. On agenda item 105.
Agenda item 105, this site development plan review, 62792. I'm going to place a condition that on the south property line, there will be 24-inch box, what was the name of the tree?
Acacia.
Acacia, trees 20 feet on center in order to add some additional foliage to include, to help block some of the security from the adjacent property owners to the south of the property line. And that will be the only condition at this time that I place on this particular item. And everything else staff has agreed to, I agree to as well. And Mr. Gronhauer, do you agree to the additional?
Yes, councilman, I do. Yes.
Okay. So having said that, I'll move for approval, subject to all conditions.
And you'll let us know if the wall is not eight feet, please?
And, and also, to check the height of the wall, I'm pretty confident that it's eight foot, but if you'll please...
Yeah, I saw the retaining wall there, so it's on top of a six-foot wall.
That's correct. All right?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Coffin, Councilman Barlow, please vote. And please post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, backwards we go to 102 and 103. 102, S U P 62674, on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 4,475 square foot pub bar or lounge tavern use. 103, S U P 62677, on a request for a special use permit for gaming restricted use within a proposed 4,475 square foot pub bar or lounge tavern use. The applicant... The applicant is S2W LLC, and the owner is Trails Village Center Company, General Partnership and nineteen sixteen Village Center Circle, Suite Seven, P-C Plan Community Zone, V.C. Village Commercial, Summerland Special Land Use Designation. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on both items, these are in Ward Two with Councilman Beers, public hearing items which I declare open, is the applicant or representative present.
We are.
Hello, and your name is, please?
Jennifer Lazovich, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here tonight, representing the applicant.
Okay, Mr. Perrigo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Lowenstein.
Hello.
Madam Mayor, staff finds that the proposed use can be compatibly, be conducted compatibly harmonious with the adjacent commercial uses in the established commercial center, and is recommending approvals.
That's cute.
Thank you.
That's very cute. Okay, this is public hearing, anybody wishing to be heard on these items?
Mayor, if I can make a brief presentation?
You could do that first, I'll leave the public hearing part open, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. Jennifer Lazovich here, representing the applicants today, we do appreciate both staff and Planning Commission recommending approval of both of these items. We did do a neighborhood meeting prior to the Planning Commission, and so one clarification that I would like to make for today's record, there was some discussion at the neighborhood meeting about the use of the common area patio that sits out there right between where our center is shown on your overhead and the business that's on the other side of the common area patio. At the neighborhood meeting, we indicated that we wouldn't be doing any outdoor patio use, however, at the Planning Commission, based upon some feedback, we indicated, I indicated for the record, that we would look into seeing if we could provide a patio option for patrons. Since that time, we've gotten some cost analysis back, I don't believe that, should this item be approved, we will open with the patio option, but we will keep it in mind and see how things go, and if there's an opportunity to add it down the road, we will, I just wanted to note that for the record.
Thank you very much. Going back to the other street plan that showed Village Center, is that the Starbucks corner? These roundabouts are enough to kill you, where...
Yes, it is, Mayor, if you want to look at my overhead.
Yes, this one right here is perfect, where is the Starbucks?
The Starbucks would be on the, okay, they're going to go to mine. So this is the location of our application, and the Starbucks is located right here. This is the Village Trail Center where the Bonds was, which has closed, but in Albertson's will be coming back in.
Right, okay, wonderful, we're delighted to see action again back in that center. Okay, it's public hearing, still open, anybody wish, may comment on this application, please come forward and state your name for the record?
Excuse me, my name is, excuse me, my name is James Wilken, I've lived in this neighborhood for twenty-one years, this corner property has seen multiple restaurants come and go, I think this use is a far better business plan, and is much more likely to succeed than some of the other ones have. There has been a lot of opposition from some of the residents of the neighborhood, having to deal with the fact that it's so close to a park, however, there's also a lot of support in the neighborhood amongst the adults, and other people who would like to see more dining options, something that's open twenty-four hours, something we can go to, something we can walk to, was a big item during the Planning Commission, and I fully support this proposal.
Thank you very much for coming down, appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak on this or these items? Seeing and hearing no one else, we're going to close that, and any comments, questions from council? Yours, Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move for approval, deleting the two conditions proposed by the Planning Commission. While I think I understand where they're trying to go, I think subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting, we've worked out another condition that will get us all where we want to go a little better, and that would be as follows, any new applicant applying to the City of Las Vegas for a tavern license in this location must provide written proof to the City of Las Vegas from the Howard Hughes Corporation, the original master developer of Summerlin, its affiliates, successors, or designated agent of their consent to such tavern license application. That condition is based on the current applicant having provided just such a letter from the original master developer of Summerlin, approving that particular operator in that particular location, primarily, I think, as a tribute to, sorry, that particular operator, they're just good operators, and I think that the neighbors' concerns, I think, are going to be naturally handled by their good operations, it's the next operator, I think, that we're all concerned with, and so the next item that we have before us is the business license, and so that is my motion, Your Honor.
I would question you, when you say Howard Hughes, they may no longer be the operators in the future, and they may sell out their entire...
And so we've, that's the purpose of adding to that, the, its affiliates, successors, or designated agent.
Okay, there's a mo, oh, comment down here, Councilman Coffin?
Just, there is a concern, I see evidence, I'm just reading between lines on a lot of these notes that have come in here, and there are an awful lot of people who say they need a bar in the shopping center, and they all work at Wells Fargo. So if there is an employee, employer relationship problem going on there that requires employees to seek drink after work, we've got to find out more about that. That's Councilman Beers' ward, I would be concerned about them as well, I know you are, and the bank is a good bank, but apparently they're driving everybody to drink.
Finally, somebody is turning it around. Okay, there's a motion.
Thank you for making me not answer that, Your Honor.
I saved you, I did. Please vote, and please post. That motion carries, and on agenda, item one oh three, please?
Thank you, Your Honor, I have moved for approval, deleting the conditions of the Planning Commission and adding the following condition, any new applicant applying to the City of Las Vegas for a tavern license in this location must provide written proof to the City of Las Vegas from the Howard Hughes Corporation, original master developer of Summerlin, its affiliates, successors, or designated agent of their consent to such tavern license application.
Mayor, if I can make a comment?
Yes, please.
I very much appreciate the motion for approval, and as Councilman Beers indicated, we, as part of our application, have already submitted that letter, so we already comply with that condition, just wanted to note that for the record, as they move forward on licensing.
Thank you.
And here's a copy of said letter, Your Honor, I can pass it down, also, it's in our backup information, but that particular PDF is, I don't know, a hundred and ninety-five pages long, and I don't know which page this is.
Save the paper, give it to our clerk. So there's a motion to approve agenda item one oh three, please vote, and please post. And that motion carries, too, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Okay, agenda item one oh six, been abayed April sixth, correct?
Yep.
Agenda item one oh seven, I will turn over to Councilman Mayor Pro Tem, because a co-owner of Cornerstone happens to work for me in the mayor's office.
Very well, thank you, Your Honor, this is agenda item one oh seven, it is VAC six-two-six-six-four, this is a public hearing, the applicant owner, Cornerstone Company, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a portion of Fourth Street at the intersection of Fourth Street and Colorado Avenue, this is in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff recommends denial, the Planning Commission recommends approval, subject to conditions, this is a public hearing, I do now declare it open, and I see that the applicant is present. Is there anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this item? This is a public hearing, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Do you need to disclose anything?
No, no, we're good. Mr. Truesdale, please.
Rick Truesdale, eight-twenty, Rancho Lane, Suite Eighty-Five, representing Cornerstone Company. We've read through all of staff's conditions, and the only condition we had a question with was the one regarding us doing work on city property prior to the vacation being recorded, so we asked that, that kind of, that order change will still do all the work that we've committed to do, it's just...
So what are you requesting, then, is there a condition on this?
Yeah, I forget which condition it was.
And Jorge, did you want to take a look at this, or is this a...
It was asking us to, any of the work that needed to be done to make the existing improvements meet the city's requirement when we do the vacation, that we do that work prior to the recording of the vacation, and I just thought that was out of step with regards to us doing work on city property on...
Any comments, Mr. Serrantes?
Yes, for the record, Jorge Serrantes, typically, Mayor, through you, those type of improvements are done at time of development, so whenever they come in for their building permitting, that's the time that requires the improvements to be done, not prior to vacation, recollection, but with the construction of the site, development of the site.
Does that help, Mr. Truesdale? Or is there actually a condition, and I'll refer to Mr. Lowenstein, is there an actual condition on this?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I would defer to Bart Anderson of Public Works.
Yes, Bart Anderson, Public Works.
Passing it down the line.
I believe they're probably referring to condition number three of the vacation request, which says that prior to the recollection of the order of vacation, oh, I'm sorry, that's a different one, they're looking for number five, all public improvements, if any, adjacent to and in conflict with this vacation application are to be modified as necessary at the applicant's expense prior to the recollection of an order of vacation. This is a typical condition that is placed on all vacations, but it is often and commonly addressed by providing a bond for any improvements prior to the vacation, rather than doing the actual improvements.
We have no problem with that.
So a bond would be fine, and I believe condition number eight says that a bond would work for that.
Okay, all right, is that suffice, Mr. Truesdale?
That's more than adequate. As you can see, we're actually asking for a vacation of about forty-nine-hundred square feet of area at that intersection, but with the development plan that we will be bringing back to you, the actual reduction of public use space is only about twenty-two hundred feet, square feet, so all of that entrance along Colorado in the corner will all be re-improved as part of the development, and will be then back part of the city under the final dedications.
Very good, very good, all right. Did you want to introduce the young man standing next to you, with a nice tie on?
Justin Michaels, eight-twenty, Rancho Lane, Suite Eighty-Five.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels, just giving you our time. Councilman Coffin, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, the conditions, I've read the conditions, I don't think there are any extra conditions to be levied here, there's change of, there's money compensation to the city, which will then allow us to reimburse regional transportation system, you have agreed to pay for the appraisals on such, terminate value, is staff satisfied that there will be an equal, correct compensation for this?
Mayor Pro Tem, through you, yes, staff is satisfied that the conditions imposed will make us able to be square with the RTC.
Okay, and then that is agreed upon by the parties?
Yes, it is.
Very well, then, I will now move to approve item one oh seven on vacation six-two-six-six-four with the conditions as stated in the agenda planning memo.
All right, there's a motion for approval, please vote, and please post. Motion passes, good luck, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much, you have a great afternoon.
Okay, we're on agenda item one oh nine, we are going to set the date for any appeals filed, required public hearings, and instruct the clerk to so do, public hearing dates and appeals from the City Planning Commission, meetings in dangerous building or nuisance litter abeyments, thank you. And now, citizen participation, citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council, no subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action, if you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion, any single subject who will, the amount of time, any single speakers allowed may be limited, any member of the public who wishes to speak, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, and we will set the time at three minutes.
Good afternoon, Dorothy Barnes, one-seventy-one West Van Wagenen, eleven D Henderson, about eight-nine-zero-one-five.
Hi, Erin Henderson, good.
Hate to have to leave the other day.
Wonderful.
Good to see you, and when I'm here today, you know, some time ago, I looked at my situation, and this situation I was in, and I invited people to give me a signature on what they call a promissory note, and it's simply a contract saying you have someone that can invest money in your future plans for jobs, security, and, you know, for, you know, financial security and what have we, it covers a whole lot of things, it's better than being in a union almost, to sign this promissory note. Because of my situation, I was not supposed to be left behind in this country, they started program some years ago, and so, in the Constitution, it states there's a separation between church and state, and a lot of people get a lot of things confused sometime along the line when it comes to the church being separated from the state, and it also says, when any form of government becomes destructive to your means, it is the right of the citizen to ask for a redress of grievance, a petition to redress a grievance, and a petition was filed on my case before I left Louisiana, and when I came here, I thought I was to be facing a new way of life, even when I moved to Henderson, but the problem continues because people are rejecting what I'm inviting them to do. I found out a lot of people were lying, you know, there's a lot of fraud and racketeering in Washington DC, but it's everywhere, I found out there was a lot of people lying to have jobs, and I understand, nobody wants to be homeless, nobody want to be without livelihood, and I don't want them to be, that's why I invited them to give me a signature on a promissory note, I saw a white man, a whitest problem continues to exist, and I didn't want nobody to get hurt and lying people out of money, and I saw the drug problem, and I saw a lot of people didn't have money, whatever kind of way they convincing them to get hooked on this drug therapy, that a lot of people didn't have money to cover it, and they was hurting me and lying on me, and maybe they was doing it to a lot of other people, and slandering a lot of other people to get money to support their habits, and I said, well, sign this promissory note, I'm like the Pope, I have a lot of mercy and grace, I was raised in the church community, I have love for my neighbors, my brothers and sisters in Christ, I don't want to see people hurt and going down the wrong road. I lost a nephew at nineteen to drugs, was shot to death before I moved here, and then my youngest brother was ex-military police, maybe murdered over the drugs, and people up there in my life, drug dealers, if they get busted, what are they going to do to me? I didn't put none of these people out into the drug market, I didn't vote in no program to put their families' lives on the line, or put law enforcement's life on the line, trying to control the drug trafficking, and I tried to address it, I even invited some people I knew were selling drugs, I said, well, sign this promissory note, I don't want to see them like, end up like my nephew at nineteen.
The only thing I have to ask you, because time's running, we're so thrilled you have a home...
Okay, well, I was just here to petition people, you know, to sign this promissory note, I'm with Pope Francis, I'm waiting to be confirmed, and I want to see mercy and grace to this country.
Thank you, and good luck up in Henderson, beautiful.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember recognition, comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Is there any member of the council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? And I have just heard from Councilman Coffin, who is having to leave, that he has nothing. I know, Councilman Barlow, you had an appointment, so do you want to go ahead?
I'm done.
You're done. The councilwoman.
Today is the seventh annual Nevada Moves Day, and activities have been occurring at the different schools. Nevada Moves Day started in two thousand and ten to encourage K-through-eight students, parents, and school staff to walk or bicycle, tour from school, and so Ward One, this year, did a Nevada Moves Week, we've been doing activities throughout the week, along with the Clark County School District Police, Lookout Kids About, the Elks Lodge, fourteen-sixty-eight, and our own office, and today, we're sponsoring, right at this time, I believe, a bike rodeo at Darefelt Elementary School. On Friday, Rex Bell Elementary will have two safety assemblies with educational messages put to music by George Dare as part of a grant from the Care Coalition and Lookout Kids About. Forty-eight schools were chosen by the coalitions, and I would like to thank everybody who's been participating in this, I think it's been a successful week. And we are having a great barbecue on Saturday, we're trying to emulate Councilman Barlow, and so my office is hosting a neighborhood meeting and a barbecue for residents who live within Meadows Lane, Charleston, Valley View, and Decatur, you should have received notices. The meeting is scheduled for one PM at the West Charleston Lions, or sometimes called Essex Circle Park, and we will have representatives there from Public Works, Code Enforcement, Community Services, Republic Services, and the Bolden Area Command. The whole idea is to finally get moving quickly on the walkable community in that area. that area. That's an area where we're improving sidewalks, streets, um, trees, vegetation, and all kinds of things. Plus, we're getting help from the community for neighbors who live in that area, to keep clear away, uh, trash they may have, or to help paint or fix fences or things along that line. We have several, uh, community groups that are helping us. All I can say is, if I lived in that area, this is the one chance you have to make a big difference in your community there, and it shouldn't cost you a whole lot of money. On, and then also, Ward One is hosting a senior safety spree on Tuesday, March 26th, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM at the Mirabella Community Center at 62 Hargrove Avenue. We'll have information sent, sessions on senior driving, senior falls, pedestrians and bus safety, and seniors as parents. In addition, there will be free vision screening, blood pressure checks, document shredding, driving safety assessments, and a drug turn-in for expired and no longer used prescriptions. For more information, please call our Ward One Council Office at 229-6405. And the seniors, uh, maybe, you think we need to take that test?
Every day.
Every day, yes.
Good for you, keep you alive.
And then for every ward, I wanted to just remind everybody that the Neighborhood Partners Program, MPF, Grant Application Process, is now open. Neighborhood grants are available for neighborhood events, for beautification projects, for signature, uh, signage, excuse me, and safety. Neighborhood groups are encouraged to apply for up to $5,000 in grants that must be matched by in-kind donations, cash, and volunteer help. But I will tell you that the money that they give you for the help that you, um, provide adds up a lot to get to that matching grant, so that's never been a concern where I've seen this done in the past. The deadline to apply is Monday, April 18th. For more information, please contact Maria Castile Couch in Community Services, 702-229-6681. And I just want to say for Terry Murphy and for myself, have a happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow.
Thank you. I thought you were Armenian, or your husband.
Well, I think when I was sixteen, someone mistook me for Irish, so I sort of write on that.
Okay, um, Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite everyone out to my, uh, shredding event, uh, this Saturday, March 19th, from 10:00 to noon. It's going to be in Sun City, Summerlin, at the Mountain Shadows Community Center off of Del Webb. It is, uh, free of charge. You can come up, uh, come there with five boxes of stuff that you want shredded, so you don't become a victim of identity theft. Uh, Opportunity Village will be there to collect your, uh, documents and shred them properly, and, uh, you don't even have to get out of your car. And, uh, with that, since I won't see everybody till after Easter, happy Easter, everyone.
Thank you. Councilman Beers?
You know, I have nothing, Your Honor.
You always have a point of history, music history.
Well, I'm, 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 I thought that I had, in fact, I vowed my last driving safety assessment would be when I was sixteen. So I don't think I'm going to go to Councilwoman Arcanian's.
Wow.
But no, that's all we have.
No music history?
Nothing.
There, how is that possible?
Didn't the Beatles do something this way?
On this day in music history, people just listen to music.
Okay, you have to have that every time, we can't just come up with naught. Okay, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to, an observance, gentle observance, I have noticed that over the years of being on this council, that we are so active in our wards, always doing something in someone's ward, and so there's always something going on, uh, for us as a Las Vegas City Council. So just proud to serve with all of you. Uh, Ward Six announcements, this will be hopefully as quick as possible. Of course, that is, uh, me reading at Betsy Rhodes Elementary School. It was a Dr. Seuss Day, and, uh, councilmembers, you are allowed to borrow my...
You're not reading, you're eating.
Well, I was cutting the cake, but I read already.
He read the label on the cake.
And certainly you can borrow that hat anytime you feel the need. It is available, uh, and free of charge. Uh, so first, our first event, yes, Councilwoman, thank you for talking about. Tomorrow is St. Patrick's Day, and I will be at the Great Harvest Bread Company at 8:00 in the morning. It's at 6475 North Decatur, the Best Buy Costco Shopping Center there at the Decatur at 215. Come on out, and, uh, we'll have a conversation, and I'll buy you a cup of coffee, and we'll go from there. So that's, uh, I'm trying to emulate... No, no, no Baileys. It's bring your own Baileys if you want Baileys and the coffee. Is that what it's going to take to get to there, Councilman? It's St. Patrick's Day. Also, a great event that we are having right here in City Council chambers over the spring break is our Spring Break Youth Leadership Summit. We have a special guest, Betsy Fretwell, uh, will be the, the lead speaker at that event. Uh, we're trying to expose, uh, our youth to the leadership team at the City of Las Vegas and give them opportunities to see how city government works. It's open for all Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, youth leaders. Uh, we will have Las Vegas Fire and Rescue there doing hands-on, only CPR, uh, CPR demonstrations, and I will be presenting the Great American Youth Awards, which there's a whole lot of kids in this community that have earned this award. So that's going to be fun for me. Uh, we do have tickets available if you want to ride the bus. The RTC has graciously offered to give, uh, free, uh, tickets to, for kids and families who want to ride the bus and come on down to City Hall. So good, like to see everybody there. And of course, as we, the weather is warming up, and it's again time for our annual spring celebration and foster connection. This is where we get together the first week in April, out at Floyd Lamp Park at Tulley Springs, and we celebrate foster families and foster children and give them the opportunity. All of the service providers come out to Tulley Springs. So if you're interested in being a foster family, foster parents, and you could have, you want one more child in your house to, to make a difference in their life, come out to this event. It is free. We'll have amusement rides, of course, farmer's markets, petting zoo, jump houses. Uh, it's, this is a great opportunity for anybody who wants to get involved with that. We partner with Clark County and, uh, and love doing it. So we're also having a clothing drive. If you want to help, uh, support some foster children in the area, that would be nice too. For more information, contact my office, 702-229-6154. So that's going to be fun on April 2nd, from noon to four, Mayor and councilmembers. And again, our, of course, our continuing, uh, relationship with Nevada Childseekers. We do have a missing, uh, young man. His name's Kiri McCray. He's thirteen, he's thirteen years old, he's five foot eleven, 145 pounds. Uh, he was last seen around February 25th. Uh, he was last seen in the area of Whitney Ranch and Russell Road in Henderson, Nevada. He may have been wearing a gray sweatshirt and black and gray sweatpants with black and gray Nike shoes. He may be carrying a black backpack with his belongings.